All right. Thank you everybody for being here. Yeah, this is the hybrid meeting of the city council. Members of the public can view this meeting live on channel eight, the city's website and in YouTube. Live Spanish translations services are being provided by for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four four zero nine one. And it's after six, I will now call a study session to order. And we're going to recess to the urban renewal authority. We'll now call the U R A meeting for order, ask the secretary to call.
Sheriff Douglas. Your vice chair noble.
President.
Commissioner Madera.
President.
Commissioner Teeter.
President.
Commissioner Chacon.
President.
Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Dukes.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
There.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Commissioner Amador. Commissioner Machuga. And Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Mayor or Chair Douglas, you have a form.
Okay. So is Chair Amador and Chuga.
Uh, Commissioner Machuga is here, Commissioner Amador is not, then we'll need a motion to excuse her.
Okay. All right, uh, I need a motion in a second to excuse members not presented. Your name?
So moved. Second.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in public say nay. All right. That passes unanimously. Okay, resolution tonight, we have one resolution to approve an amendment to the purchase and sell agreement with D P C companies. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Yay. All right, seeing now again, a motion in a second to adopt resolution U R A twenty four dash zero zero three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Any discussion, you want to raise your hand online?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seeing now, all votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in public say nay. Pass unanimously. All right. Can you adjourn the U R A and reconvene the city council session? That includes all the business before you, before the urban renewal authority will now adjourn and reconvene the city council meeting. Okay, upon the doctored is wayfinder schematic design review. Yes. Oh, pardon, go ahead.
Yep. Um, I would like to suggest moving the economic development overview to first on the agenda. It seems to be an important issue to bring before all council members and especially the new ones to just hit a baseline.
I don't have any suggestions. Is this a member? Oh, give me a second or how?
No.
It's not that kind of thing.
You can't vote.
Oh, I don't, I think moving it earlier to spend more time makes sense to me as it works for me.
Staff able to accommodate?
Yeah, we're able to accommodate, but let some of our house office members know that they'll get shifted, but you can do that.
And then with that, I was going to ask because we had a listening session last week and then Thursday is another one online and then next week at twenty, well, yeah, twenty seconds is going to be another one. Being, being said that there's three and then as far as March fourth, so if tonight, can I explain where we're at right now? And then maybe on March fourth, having what was collected, those three meetings and brought forward too, because that's information being collected that we're not going to hear tonight, correct?
Yeah, so tonight's just going to be a general overview of the current state of operations, what we've what we have attempted to do just with a cautious change of operation leadership with respect to um, economic development basis and it will walk through that. Um, we can ask our consultant about the information that they collected, whether or not they'll be able to distill it, collect it in a manner or sense for the fourth to more um, discussion. Right, so I can't commit um, without having spoken to them first. Um, obviously if there's questions or if there's additional interest that comes from the points of topic tonight, putting it on the floor for still an option as well to continue that um, for the community to better understand and to hear. I think what you will find um, after the fourth is that transition from current state to future state, what would be the interest of the council with respect to economic development, what do you want the city to be with respect to economic development? Um, once again, a lot of cities have taglines, have ideas, have um, asset strategic asset recruitment uh, as a sector recruitment that you don't currently have because it's something, but we may have to keep that, we're going to have to keep that open unfortunately.
It's just hard to hear.
Yeah, uh, we'll just tell them down there, but for public community, door open. Um, that being said, we can talk about the future state and making sure that we are clear about some of the feedback that we've gotten, the landscape assessment, the existing conditions. What do you all philosophically want to do as a city? Um, I go back to San Jose being they want to be the capital of Silicon Valley. What does that mean? Merchant tax? Those type of recruitments is what they wanted to do. We need that vision to be set by council for us to go out and accomplish um, the expectations that you're hearing from the community as well as what the community is also sharing in this feedback. So.
Interesting.
So. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, just, so are you suggesting that that because we're not calling us something, that that has been the challenge for economic development?
No, I'm, I'm kind of putting that very simplistically. You have cities that talk about what you want to go after and how you devise a strategy to go after that asset class, that sector and things that support it. Those communities take that strategic approach and they turn it into a recruiting tagline, a marketing strategy to help broaden themselves to help further uh, market themselves out to the, out to those uh, site selectors to that community and so forth. I'm giving that as an example, but you all as a body have not talked about what you want. You talk about retail, you talk about primary employment, but that's very broad. That's very, that's, that's different strategies, those are different approaches that we have to take as staff to go implement to be able to bring those back. So that's a very philosophical conversation that we have to have with the council about who do we want to be? If we want to go after clean energy, if we want to go after renewable energy manufacturing, that's very different than your P D L, transportation, diagnostics and logistics. But we have to have that conversation to make sure that that's a primary target for you all.
Um, that's economic development and I think that um, the residents of both the north and the south have been very clear about what they're looking for in terms of retail development. Uh, restaurants, sit down restaurants or grocery stores, et cetera. And this council, this previous council has talked about that regularly with at meetings and with staff, so I, I'm, I don't understand this um, uh, detour into suggesting that somehow there has not been this conversation. I sincerely want the conversation uh, and look forward to it about what kind of businesses that we all are mutually agreeing to that we would like to go after. But it's two different things, so I hope that when Jason gives his economic development overview, he will also be talking about retail development and not simply economic development.
Well, I, I appreciate that, ma'am, I wouldn't call it a detour, but retail development is economic development. They all interspeak with one another and I would say while yes, we've talked about grocery stores, we've talked about retail, we've talked about that broad brush. Retail is a response to what is the primary driver, where there's primary employment or housing. And if we can't address those items, I'm just going to be frank and my team could speak to a little bit more, we are going to continue to struggle with being able to recruit retail. Because the primary employment, which is the daytime population and the housing and the continued sustained growth of the nighttime population are critical to the commercial that you're talking about, the grocery stores, the restaurants, the commercially supportive orange theories and things rely on those two asset classes, those two groups being very clear from a community standpoint or from a city standpoint.
The Blue Ribbon Economic Development Advisory Committee, B R E D A C, found that we did have enough housing. Uh, not that we needed more housing, we had enough housing. The one item that they suggested is that we have more primary employment because without primary employment, people are commuting outside of the, of Commerce City and going elsewhere. So if you're driving all the way down to Greenwood Village, then you might be doing some of your business down at that end. But could we please have the presentation from Jason?
Yes, ma'am. I was just responding to your question since you put it out there on the table, on the floor.
Yeah, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Brian Feta Place.
Yes, ma'am. Since we had that.
Yes, really quick, just to focus um, that I know I have, one is sustainable industry, specifically what I'm getting from communities is more of an education center, workforce development center, bringing in those colleges, bringing in those tech centers and being more of a capital that way. Um, looking at all the resources that can support that too, it is senior centers, it is that kind of extra development too.
That's what.
Um, I've gone to many others, but yeah, I can see where you're talking about where you need to focus and there is a lot of community resources already that does have the data.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Can I, can I just add something? We're jumping up. Because what I'm hearing you saying, and I've seen this examples around. I mean, you were, you mentioned San Jose, like what are, what are our, what are our big bets, right? Uh, I think about Chattanooga, Tennessee. When they redid their waterfront, it was all industrial and this water front, they made a big bet to say we want to focus on outdoor recreation as well as walkability. Uh, you think about Bend, Oregon, same thing, we want to focus on recreation as well as uh, uh, family friendly environment, these are the big bets as a city. Austin, Texas is also another good example, say we're going to focus on X, Y, or Z, so I, I like the idea, I think we're actually saying the same things is if we're able to say here's our big bets, that's going to attract workforce, which will attract primary jobs, which will actually be able to have secondary jobs as well, where we can actually have the housing and um, in addition to the restaurants and stuff that we all want and all need. Um, but also, what I'm also hearing though, this is a long term opportunity to say, let's find our big bets, let's think about it and really build a plan that's like five, ten, fifteen years down the road, which is going to help us all as a whole city. Right? So I'm excited about the possibility.
Okay, we're ready to go. Great.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the city council, Jason Disson, Director of Strategic Partnerships. Here to provide you an update uh, on our economic development efforts currently underway in a series of projects as well, so. I'll start by introducing our team and then Brian Feta Place, our interim economic development director will uh, give you updates on our strategic plan, business and retail attraction. Then we have Stuart Meek here to provide us note overview of our business retention and expansion, uh, marketing communication at the city councils. Uh, but we also, big, 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 big picture overview for us uh, this evening. Uh, starting first with our newest member is Stuart Meek, he joined us uh, just in September as our economic development local business manager. Has over fifteen years of experience in economic development, local government and entrepreneurship. Some of his previous career stops include assistant to the city manager and city of Royal Oak, Michigan, senior economic developer for the city of Centennial, Colorado. And most recently co-founder of a startup called Barn to Spaceship. Uh, and we are pleased to have him. Uh, next up is Brian Feta Place, uh, Brian's been with us for nearly uh, three years as our uh, senior economic development specialist. He's currently serving in the role as economic development director. Uh, prior to joining the city, Brian spent uh, time as the director of economic development in the Cherry Creek North Business Improvement District. Uh, where he specialized in retail recruitment and retention efforts as well as data management uh, efforts as well. Prior to that, Brian spent uh, over ten years with the downtown different partnerships specializing again in retail development and economic development. Uh, during that time, he was critical in securing first to market retailers, including H and N, uh, Kit and Ace, uh, and Uniqlo as well as securing the first locations for King Supers, Whole Foods and Target in the downtown district as well. As for myself, I joined the city in April, have over twenty years of experience in community partnerships, community events, economic development and urban revitalization. Uh, and have built award winning teams in Fort Collins, Arvada and the Loro District. Uh, moving on to the future makeup of our team, we're currently in the process of conducting, conducting a nationwide search uh, to secure economic development director who will lead the implementation of our new economic development plan, uh, which you'll hear more about in just a few minutes. We're currently in the process of interviewing applicants for business development manager. That position is primarily dedicated to assisting us in business attraction strategies. Uh, and finally, we're in the process of uh, reclassifying a senior economic by top, uh, senior economic development specialist position into a senior economic vitality specialist position. To really focus on implementation of key initiatives within our marketing and communication plans as well as foster the growth, growth of our small business ecosystem and entrepreneurship uh, systems as well. So with that, I'll turn it over uh, to Brian and he'll give us an update on our strategic plan, retail, business attraction strategy, so the usual chairs here.
Good evening, thank you, Jason. Jason Muchand, I'm here to give you an update on the very high level of what economic development divisions work and um, work plan is organized around. And the purpose of the economic development division is to promote a balanced, thriving and inclusive city economy that cultivates, attracts and retains businesses. And we have a primary objective that rolls up, all of our work rolls up into quality of life begins with a good job. And so we work towards that ideal with these concepts of what economic can do, economic development does, which is wealth generation, economic diversification of our employment, job growth and preservation of jobs, building the local tax base as well as place making. And then tonight, we'll be covering some of the focus areas, not all of them, but the list there is all of the focus areas that the economic development division works on. Tonight, we'll be focusing on the update on the economic development strategic plan that Jason referenced. Uh, primary business attraction, business retention and expansion, retail retention and attraction. And then finally, uh, marketing and communications, when I hand it over to Stuart. So last fall, we engaged community attributes incorporated through an R and P process to develop the five year economic development strategic plan, and this is going to be the foundational document that guides our economic, economic development efforts over the next five years. Um, one of the first deliverables for the work that we are having C I A do was to complete a preliminary findings, uh, landscape assessment and conditions report. And it relied on previous plans that have been done as well as the ongoing strategic planning efforts of a number of other divisions that are happening at the city. So all of that is rolling up into this kind of um, lay of the land, if you will, where we are currently and then that also includes a SWOT analysis. So strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and um, opportunities. So we'll be finalizing comments for that and that work is wrapping up, but while we were doing that, we engaged in a very robust community and stakeholder engagement effort uh, that started with a survey that we opened last December and have kept open. We were originally supposed to close at January eleventh, but we want to keep it open as long as possible to get as much of a response and as much feedback as possible. So right now, we're keeping it up probably at least through the end of February and trying to bolster the number of responses on the survey uh, that we receive. Then we also embarked, starting last week on a public listening session, we had the first one at Bison Ridge Recreation Center on February seventh. It was attended by approximately thirty members of the general public. General consensus was we got good feedback and good engagement with a wide variety of demographics at that event. Throughout the two hours of the event, that was from six to eight at Bison Ridge. We have a virtual session on February four fifteen. We wanted to make sure that if people physically could not get to one of these sessions, that they also had an opportunity to still provide their feedback. So we have a virtual one over Zoom that'll take place on Thursday, February fifteenth. And then we have one on February twenty second at Eagle Point Recreation Center. We wanted to make sure that we had locations in the northern part of the city as well as the core part of the city so that people had an easy way to get to these sessions and provide their feedback. Throughout the entire time, we asked our partner agencies to help us get people to those events. And then in the month of March, we will be replicating all three of those events for the next phase of that outreach. So there'll be two more public outreach efforts, uh, one in early March, one in late March, and then there'll be another session in mid-March as well. At the very beginning of the process, we engaged, uh, kicked off the process by having one-on-one hour-long listening sessions with the mayor, uh, interested members of city council as well as the city manager. And then we also will be having a uh, focus group type conversation with the consultant at the March fifteenth. Uh, so uh, city council retreat as well, so the consultant is confirmed to come and present the key findings to date and also be there to answer questions and um, and listen to feedback at that time. The goal for the E D strategic plan is to have it completed and delivered by mid twenty twenty-fourth. So to give an overview of status of where we are with business and retail attraction, uh, we are participating in a number of aggressive outbound marketing events across the United States where we are presenting Commerce City as a place to expand and grow their business for targeted prospective retailers and employers. Uh, this includes retailers, restaurants and other commercial development. Uh, we are annually uh, attending four international council and shopping center conferences. These are kind of the industry standard for getting connected with retail brokers and retail concepts. Uh, we just went to Dallas and uh, which was a regional event and represented the city there. We also do local events, the local events here in Denver have a great way for us to connect with local brokers and local sometime, in a lot of cases, local retailer as well to understand what is happening locally in our market. And then Las Vegas, I C S E Las Vegas will happen the weekend before Memorial Day. That is the largest retail industry event in the country, attended by about twenty-five thousand retail industry professionals. And that is the kind of industry standard of where people go to present their communities, their opportunities and hopefully attract new retailers and development to their communities. And then we also attend the I C S A New York uh, conference, that's the second largest in the United States with a hyper local focus on the, the eastern coast. We also uh, attend a entertainment focused uh, conference, we have an entertainment sector, sector as a target for our retail recruitment attraction efforts. Um, so that happened in Los Angeles just recently, February fifth through the seventh. And then on the primary jobs attraction front, we attend the annual site selectors guild conference that'll take place in Nashville this year. And that's where we get to connect with site selectors uh, who represent companies that are looking to relocate companies and uh, primary employers as they look at um, locations across the country to potentially uh, expand or relocate their operations. So all of these efforts give us face time and uh, visibility to the people that can make their, help make those decisions and we're working to cultivate relationships with the prospective retailers and the brokers they represent as well. And then finally, just a visual slide, this kind of illustrates the current prospects uh, that we are promoting to and working with to attract to Commerce City. These include a local group hub, uh, grocery stores, as been discussed previously at council meetings, uh, entertainment concepts, uh, outdoor and indoor recreation concepts. And then a very high target profile, uh, target for us is sit down full service restaurants, uh, specifically including um, three meals a day, but also breakfast concepts as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Stuart, who's going to talk about our business retention and expansion program.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name is Stuart Meek. It's great to be before all of you today. Um, I'm going to talk about, as was mentioned, business retention expansion program as well as marketing. Uh, for B R E, just to give some context here, uh, to build out our strategy and program launch, we looked all across the country of orbiting programs and built this strategy uh, for Commerce City. Um, all these programs had a vision, mission and principles, so that's why we put it up here. Um, the vision is for Commerce City's economic economy to thrive, grow and adapt with support of a leading business retention expansion program. Uh, the mission is to retain and expand local and primary businesses. And I called out the principles because I think every one of them is up there for a specific and important purpose. We want the program to be purpose driven, focused on solutions for business, innovative, action oriented, collaborative and data driven. So this is kind of the, an overview of the full B R E program. Um, the, the number one takeaway I want everybody to have is that this is focused on driving business value, we're not here to just meet with a business one time a year and try to understand what's going on, the, the goal is to build an ongoing relationship with each business as part of the program. Uh, connect them to services through our service partners as well as any service or incentive programs that the city puts together. Connect them to uh, other resources that we're aware of through other partnerships as well, of course. As I mentioned, there's a tangible business outcome focus, so we are there to help solve business problems, help figure out how we can retain and help our businesses to grow. Uh, that's always going to be the bottom line for us for any programs we put together as well as uh, when we're sitting down and the conversations that we have with our businesses. Um, the program should inform policies and programs, so we have something that is part of this called, well, I'm calling creative, creating the future. Uh, the idea here is that uh, a lot of times when you're having these types of um, uh, conversations with businesses, big, more, more regional type of problems come up in discussion, we're trying to think of a path to find uh, collaboratively find solutions to that. So the idea would be identifying one or two of those a year and having a business roundtable around them where uh, an outcome of that is uh, potential policy items that you all could react to or that we could be looking to the state or others to react to. Uh, innovation is another important one. Uh, we have a partnership, a smart cities pilot partnership with Quali to create our front door, if you will, our online presence for the business retention expansion program. Uh, the, the, besides being branded and all of that, the main kind of focus that Quali is bringing to the table is it's an intake tool that will more easily pair uh, businesses and their needs to resources that we have in our ecosystem. And then the A I piece there is, is for now more of an idea uh, for uh, screening to target specific businesses is a pretty data heavy process, so we were thinking maybe there's an artificial intelligence kind of solution to targeting and screening of businesses. Um, connection, business to business connection obviously is important, but we're also thinking about how do we engage our businesses in our community to kind of ground them more in the community and, and uh, build kind of quality of life for everybody. Uh, the awards program will continue, the business appreciation awards. Um, we have a new award this year, a sustainability award, we're excited to, to roll out. And this will be a, a, a program that's branded in and of itself, so yeah, we're, we're trying to create an identity that people can react to around the business retention expansion program. We have a specific uh, strategy for launch, we're going to uh, formally launch it at the business appreciation breakfast on April seventeenth. Uh, we're planning it, what I'm calling a business blitz, what that really means is we're going to interact with a hundred businesses in a week. The idea behind all of this is trying to get people and businesses talking about what we're working on and uh, help uh, uh, build a, build, help build the brand from the beginning. Uh, I know we, we've done a lot of surveys, but I think this is an important kind of opportunity, given that we haven't had sort of a, a full business retention expansion program. Uh, to do a survey that's, you know, very short and focused on uh, hearing from our businesses around the strengths, weaknesses and opportunities they see for Commerce City and that'll go to inform uh, our one-on-run outreach as well as that creating the future program that I talked about earlier. And then I mentioned, of course, that we'll have a unique brand for this program that we're working on. Next, going to talk about marketing, so we had a uh, marketing uh, strategic plan, if you will, that was delivered to uh, the city right at the end of last year, we're going to be uh, meeting with council members one-on-one to go through that in more detail, this is just a kind of highlight for you. Uh, this is a list, there's ten main tactics that they recommended that the city undertake. Uh, first is a website revamped, specific, specific to economic development, so with dynamic and uh, visuals, updated strategic content. Uh, they also recommended that we update our photography and videography to showcase Commerce City's vibrancy. Um, I'll point out on the side that kind of this is an example of what collateral look like and uh, it also shows how important the photography and videography is going to be for uh, for that, the, for the marketing, for the brand. Um, there's a specific marketing collateral that they called out that they'd like to, uh, that they recommend us doing uh, as well as getting an E newsletter started up, uh, which will uh, do as part of our business retention expansion program as well. Uh, they recommended an ambassador program um, where business leaders and community members, uh, a, a group of them are empowered to promote the benefits of doing business Commerce City. Uh, they recommended that we have a, a greater focus on public relations, so doing more press releases around our, our celebrations for our businesses. Uh, more paid media. Uh more paid media, uh and then uh we're doing a lot of this broker development, site selection sort of outreach, as Brian touched on. Uh but they've given some additional ideas about how we can expand that effort. They gave us some key messages as well. So first of all, at the top there, I have the the tone. Is intended to be friendly and approachable, smart and energized, prepared and professional, and supportive and inclusive. And this is, I won't, I won't read them. You'll have a chance to interact with these a little bit more later, but it gives a sense of. Um what the the key messages we're using to to market Commerce City. Finally, just wanted to, and we thought this was an important uh item to point out for council is that. You play a very important role in the work and the economic development work that we do. Uh we can't be successful with any, once our ED strategic plan is in place, we cannot be successful without your support. Here's here, this isn't a full list. Obviously, you're you're doing more than this, but these are the things that that call out for importance from from our perspective. Obviously, you're helping to set the vision for Commerce City uh through that feedback in the strategic plan as well as ongoing meetings like this. But I think a big one too is just to not lose sight that there's uh every single uh. Uh meeting of council where you're making decisions on public works or budget or land use cases, all these things feed into the success of an economic development strategic plan. So I think that's just important to kind of have you in your mind throughout your your tenure that. All of those decisions follow up to success or or lack thereof for economic development. Uh you also are the uh great storytellers for the community, telling Commerce City's story of opportunity regularly and often. Uh especially with, you know, using those key messages to kind of align our message with what our marketing messages are is is important as well. Um there's an opportunity to attend some of our business visits through the through the retention expansion program. As well as when you show up to ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, all those things are are really important and very visible for our businesses. And then lastly, being champions of economic development of Commerce City is of vital importance. One opportunity here, for example, is that uh we have our business appreciation awards nominations that are open, that so. If you have any businesses, please submit them so we can make sure we're honoring and and celebrating our businesses. That's all we had. I think just to call out that uh we're gonna be doing one on ones with council members, so we'll dive into a lot of it, a lot more of this information in more detail and have. More opportunity to, you know, kind of have discussions about all of these topics. Uh there's obviously a lot more than what we could fit in for you tonight, so there'll be an opportunity to do that as well. And uh we're just getting started. I want everybody kind of take that, have that takeaway for tonight. We have some new staff and new staff that will be coming on. Uh a new direction and focus here. Uh so we're we're excited to be here and excited to see where all that goes. I don't know if you have any, you know, staff.
No, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Okay, it's open for questions now.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you, team. Thank you for um, you know, one, adjusting your schedule night to come to go first, but also just the work. Uh we put into this already, and I know as a team, it's been about a year, maybe, right? Been together, or is that? Less than a year?
I've been here five months.
Yeah, I'm coming up on a year.
Yeah. Uh so I appreciate that. And and so my question is, um, you know, with the. With our need uh in certain parts of the city to have more amenities and I know that. I mean, these main restaurants sit down. I saw you said there's possibility with some movie theaters and things of that nature, right? We, on the spot analysis, you didn't mention the threats, right? And I'm curious around. What are the threats that you're that we are real threats to us as a city to actually? Either catch up, and I say catch up because I know it's only been a year and and we're like, we need to do more, but. Um and what you've done already is a lot. And yeah, we're like, is there a way to speed up or are there threats that are happening that? As a council, we need to make sure that we don't either lean into a threat or cause a threat or. Anything we can do to make sure that we can get things moving forward? Um, does that, does that make sense or? How can we help make sure that we can move forward in a way that we can give the or. Opportunities out here while realizing that this team is somewhat new? But our residents have been here for a while, kind of waiting, and so how do we help move that forward?
Yeah, so to me, it's uh it's moving all those variables variables forward at at concurrently, right? Uh I've. Talked about uh public works and road infrastructure, making sure we have the infrastructure ready. Uh all all those factor into uh impacting our quality of life and economic development strategy. So really. Uh I look forward to having that conversation with our consultant as we really navigate through that. We just, we're in that process of. Determining that spot analysis, which we're preparing for at that city council retreat. So I can't, I'm not at the position really to speak to that just yet. Uh but definitely play a vital role in that and look forward to that discussion with city council.
And I guess my like second part of the question, how do we ensure that this plan isn't? Like the, you know, we have the consultants, we have the conversation. How do we ensure it moves forward? Or it's not like a great plan that's on the, you know, on the shelf or whatnot? Like what? What can we do to make sure this happens?
Great question. Uh to me, you're just really putting that into actionable items within a specific uh timeframe, but also connecting those to KPIs we're monitoring and. Uh measuring as we move forward. So it's really looking at how how do we draft that plan and that staff can implement in really a tactical way. Um and monitoring those KPIs as we move forward to make sure we're hitting the goals and outlined uh and the vision that city council has set forth.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Chacon?
You said you went to a lot of conferences this past year. How was Commerce City received so far?
So a lot of, um, so, please, so no, uh, there was a lot of Commerce City one on one where it's located, how it's different from Denver, uh approximately to Denver. But overall, the um housing numbers we were able to presume were compelling. They were really encouraged by the amount of housing growth and housing developments we've seen. So that was a positive message. That was, that was an awareness that wasn't there before. Um and then just playing up our attributes for being close to the airport, the opportunities on Tower Road, the opportunities, the other highways and connections, so. Um a lot of materials that we presented, we're really giving them the lay of the land and where they could see themselves in those different areas. So I would say overall positive, and I've tried to be a really good cheerleader to really play that up and say, you know, we're ready, we're. Really striving for these leases and our residents are ready for it and they want it and really trying to tell that story.
Can I ask one more quick question? Um, have you been to any sustainable industries or development like that?
No, that is, that is not been the most direct connection between retail recruitment and sustainability, but that trend and those themes. Are coming up more and more. They came up um a number of times at the the uh kind of the entertainment conference as well as the ICSC Dallas. It's a value that's. Coming into retail uh decision making, but not a conference specifically at that at this time. You certainly would be open to any any opportunity to go and talk to those kind of stakeholders and tell the same story.
It's shaky right now because that kind of makes feelings about how climate con was this last month or so. But I know there's gonna be another climate con in Colorado and Boulder. I think it could you repeat?
What you said, but used some nouns. I just didn't hear.
I'll speak louder, sorry.
That's all right.
Um I was saying that we, there is not been a very direct connection between sustainability efforts and retail recruitment.
Okay.
And that's, the conferences primarily are focused on that, either entertainment and or those inner uh retail concepts. Um I have not been to the site selection conference before because that was another staff member who's departed, so I will be able to answer that question better when we get back from Nashville. Understand where that value is playing up. We have heard from other site selection conferences from feedback that. That increasingly is a value that is part of their decision making process. So it's starting to filter in there, but we certainly um can look into this climate con and Boulder. And see what kind of, what makes sense for that.
There's a solar one coming pretty soon too. So if I see any conferences, I'm gonna say that you'll be able to go to most of it, but. I'll just work.
Very open to the opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kim?
Mr. Petty Place, is it Petty or Fettie? Sorry, I don't get keep missing.
It's okay, it's Feta.
Feta, I'm sorry. Uh first and foremost, thank you guys for the presentation altogether, and I know I think Councilwoman uh Chacon kind of touched on it and with your, with your response. Can you expand on as far as what are, based on your experience, right, with economic development? Going through all these conferences and whatnot, and obviously people wanting to know where Commerce City is located, you know, what it has to offer and all that. What are some of the top? Let's say, top three questions that's typically asked, and in addition to that, when it comes to rooftops. Can you expand on that a little bit more? Because it sounds like to me that you said that they're they're pretty are. The rooftop aspect of things, uh it seems very positive, like they're 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 willing to. They're willing to basically engage with Commerce City because we think we have enough? Or we don't have enough? I mean, what are we?
Um I would say it was, it isn't quantitative, this enough or not. It's more about. They're impressed with the number of housing entitlements, the information we've put in front of them. As far as the top three kind of. Aha moments that tend to be is they don't understand the role that they are someplace in our city's boundaries and how. It really does affect how we're talking about the two areas. So showing them visually on a map is very helpful to show them that there is that. Drive time for our residents and our consumers that they have to look at. Um but that's also where there's an opportunity. Because it does create enough distance and drive time from, say, Central Park and some other places because of that drive time. Um I would just say that understanding the difference of where Denver starts and where City Cans Commerce City begins is also another point. And then understanding that reunion isn't, that reunion is in Commerce City, surprisingly. They think of reunion as just reunion. Uh and we have to really educate them and say, it's reunion is is a neighborhood, a community within Commerce City. Um so that's, those are just some of the kind of conversations that I've had recently.
Are there, just a quick follow up to, are there any discussions with regards to metro districts that are out there in the north northern range area? Uh with regards to, obviously, and it could be a potential impact as far as when a business wants to come in. Into the northern range area? I mean, that makes sense.
In the conversations I've had, it's really just. Uh be open to the opportunity. We would love to talk with you further. We don't really get into the, we give them the general vicinity of where we know the development's happening. But we have not got until the moment where we talk about what the differences might be between one site and another based on either a metro district and or. The middleies or anything like that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Derek?
Um, you mentioned the, you know, some of the key anchors is, you know, rooftops. Or having uh anchor businesses and industries. What industries have you been looking at to, you know, fill that daytime population?
Well, our top categories are on our website, but they include transportation, uh distribution logistics is the primary employer for the city. They they have the most jobs. Um there are some, some in professional services. There's uh some in retail trade when we get down to the bottom of the list. Um there are some other manufacturers warehousing, um but those. Employment sector or those employment concentrations are more in the um highway two corridor area in the city. So they're benefiting that area more so than, say, of where it transitions to primary residential when you get up onto. Say ninety six hundred and fourth, then you get up to just Tower Road.
I guess, let me rephrase the question. Um so. Is there other uh industries that we're targeting to try to kind of infill that? Because. The transportation district is not a good uh driver for commercial, right? Because they come and they're gone. And they're not spending time or money or going out to lunch, you know, like. Say, an office job or or something of that nature. So is there, have there been industries that we've been talking to to try to attract to the city to kind of fill that that void?
Yeah, absolutely. We have actually really close to. Oh, I don't want to, uh, yeah, so we're in very uh uh. Very close to securing some of those uh types of industries that you're mentioning. Um but we're not at that position yet to release any uh uh names or data points out at this time, but yeah, we're really close.
We also expect the economic development strategic plan to answer your question better. And so we'll look at the existing conditions and Jason, I'm sorry, did you want to add something?
Uh no, I I think you can raise a couple of the most recent gets that we've gotten with pharmaceuticals. Uh Boise Cascade. So if you want to outline some of those, because those did add um significant job. Uh daytime jobs. Um with them moving into the city and will be moving into, say, those are some of your light manufacturing Boise Cascade. One of the largest residential manufacturers of. Uh doors, windows that go to pretty much every home in the Denver front range. That's significant. Um given that where they're loan location, but actual manufacturing in in Denver. Uh we had the keys in medical supplies. Uh which is another manufacturing, but in the medical supply world outside of your traditional T D L. So we've seen some of those over the last six to eight months and to Jason's point. Um we have another one to two, maybe three, which are confidential and would love to tell more about and hopefully we can. Get that position which we can tell you. But that kind of gets to your point about adding true significant daytime population.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, so I kind of want to piggyback on with Councilmember Madera. Are we going after uh any kind of like tech opportunities and and something that. Goes like in the opposite direction of logistics and and uh transportation and and uh. So can uh maybe duplicate. Uh the kinds of jobs that people are leaving our area for to drag down E four seventy to get to their jobs at D T C. Are we thinking in that direction because we're so close to the airport and and thinking that uh. We can definitely capitalize on it. Then my other question is, are we using the leakage? Uh data that we have about how much we're losing because our people go and spend their dollars elsewhere. Because we don't have the resources for them to spend their dollars on.
The second one, I would say the way that we were approaching the retail leakage and that the consumer spending of the citizens is more so on. Where we uh we have a software platform that can talk about uh origin trips and destination trips. These leakage data specifically. Has stopped being supported in the manner that we had originally, so we're having to pivot to understanding consumer preferences as behaviors by. The geographic, uh they're opting in for their G I S on their phone, so that helps us understand. Where they may be shopping and where they're coming and going to. So that's where that's helping to inform them. But that's helpful also when we talk to prospective retailer or we can outline the stores that they already have in the metro area and talk about. Where our residents may be permitting their store so that they can do analysis and look at how many of those customers are there are. And if that warrants, looking at our market in a different way. Um so it's it's nuanced on the the data that we have available to us, but we are looking at that, and then we're also just looking at the sheer location of the stores and where they're located. And understanding what the drive time requirements are and if we have an opportunity to where they may have a store opportunity that they're not aware of.
And you really like to see us get out ahead of things. I mean, when I just heard that there's a target going in at fifty six. And Tower, say. Hey, I know the the Costco just went in to Denver. Um and. When I go there, who do I see? All my neighbors. But that money isn't going into Commerce City. And I mean, that's a lost opportunity, but when I keep hearing about these lost opportunities. It really, um. It's disappointing and it's, it um. It hurts, so uh, you know, I know we're competing. As a first tier level city outside of a a major metropolitan city. But at the same time, uh. We should have what it takes to to go after this, especially if we're telling our story and and letting them know what's. What's happening here and how much we could have if we if we just had been here. And then also looking at, um. Recently, uh went to a a um. Utility conference that was held at the the Westminster Weston and had to go shop. Just left that building, went underneath the bridge, and here is this. Incredible retail place that has all kinds of uh. Places for people to shop and to think, wow, they've got that there. We're next to the airport. Why don't we have the same thing? Same thing happened today, went went out to. Same thing happened today, went went out to uh, breakfast. And went to the promenade in Northland. And the first watch at at eleven o'clock was packed and you had to wait to get in there. We need those kinds of things and we need to be really aggressive in in going after them, so, um, I'm. Just hoping that we're telling the story of what opportunity is here if they'll just. Uh, take a look at us. So thank you for answering those questions, but some other things maybe to think about. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, you know, a lot of things have changed over time. A lot of people are working from home and. I I mean, the entire concept of business has changed over the COVID periods. I just want to, one of one of the things that's most important to me is protecting those nodes that are going to be commercial. Type nodes for us. You know, the intent when Cronky came in and built the stadium was a twenty five year tiff clock was going to be incentive. For him to develop so that he could take advantage of those tiff dollars, um. But he's one of the only guys in the world that have the money that doesn't have to worry about the tiff clock. Uh, so we have Northfields where it's at. To our southern portion of our community, we have Prairie Centers to the north, makes it really tough because. We're on the edge of that arsenal and to get to the center of the density. Prairie Centers is about right. Northfields is about right the other direction. We do have a commercial node, uh, all of all of the tower corridor and then um, commercial node there. Where Dave Hammer has his place on hundred and four. And I think that uh, we we also, I don't know if you have identified. Um, opportunity for entertainment. Where would an entertainment type district be placed? And and do we have identified nodes so that we can protect some of these assets? You know, um, I had talked to to Dave Hammer and he was really leaning into more of a light industrial I one stuff. And I absolutely think that that would be a travesty to give up that huge parcel. That sits in between Commerce City and Thornton with that kind of base. Uh, with the densities all the way around us and not having the impact of the arsenal. You could create some good commercial opportunities. Um, but what are we setting aside? Protect for those those commercial needs for our community, what are we setting aside for entertainment? Type opportunities, um, you know, and I know Cronky has the piece. That is really, I call it the point, the highway to um, Quebec. That that point that kind of gets towards between the two parts of our community. I don't know what Cronky has planned for there. Really think it ought to be on everybody's mind. I know it's not, it's not ours. But if we're going to engage in some real discussion about. Uh, the stadium and what happens around it, I think we ought to also keep in mind that they also have a large block of land there. Um, that would be accessible to about all different parts of our community and identifying that as a known. But there's a lot also that is transitioning over on the other side of Sand Creek, the forty eighth, forty ninth avenue area. Um, west of Sap Brothers, back through there to the Charlotte's Web, um, Ted's Place now, that whole area. Um, for some of that I one, I two, um, that may be the new higher tech. Type opportunities, but um, just to get, uh, I I think some kind of a a map that would show. These concentrated nodes for sit down restaurants, service oriented, commercial. Um, maybe re bigger box retail type. Uh, grocery and then get into the I one, I two stuff so we can visually see kind of where these nodes are. So that when we're making decisions and making, you know, uh, identifying projects. Um, that we have that on the front of our mind. Um, to try to protect some of these nodes so that we can concentrate and have a game plan that we're not. We're not deviating from to really focus and force those type of things. I didn't know if you had had any thought behind that.
No, excuse me, councilmember Ford, I think you're exactly right. What I'd like to explore with that strategic plan is looking at these nodes in these commercial areas. And 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 specific words too to say, what is our vision for this area? Uh, what are the types of uses we would like? And then, uh, maybe we even dive a little further to say, um, if the market's not there yet, uh, do we explore land baking opportunities, say? We'll purchase this and we'll hold on to this until we have something that meets our our standards and our visions. Uh, for this piece of uh, property. So I think there's a great opportunity for us to really dial in via our strategic plan. To really set that vision forward with council and our community to identify what what are their needs, uh, but also what's what's possible in today's market? And if not, can we do look at land baking opportunities to secure that until a time comes when we can maximize this opportunity?
Well, and I think it could go even beyond just the land making. I think that we can prepare it and and get it shovel ready. To where it is, it is just a a quick turnaround for what kind of use I think that we would want to see. I think it'll also help our residents to see kind of what the big picture plan is. Hey, these are our, these are the nodes that have been identified. We think these things will work the best. How do we adjust some of that to the liking of our residents? And they can actually have a a a picture and and be able to have a little more of a concept. Than just, well, yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to get these guys, we're trying to get those guys. And and something visual where they can say, oh, look. There's this is an area where there could be some restaurants. It's also helpful for future restaurants that have a have a desire. Oh, they have some spots over here. Maybe this would be good for us and then start getting some of that visual piece, identifying those nodes. But the one node that has never really been tied down is an entertainment type node. And, um, you know, we always have thought about that piece that Cronky has, um. Kind of north, that triangle piece there towards in between um, highway two and Quebec. Uh, it's it's fairly large if you go past it, but, uh. I don't know if that's the right place or not. Hammer's Hammer's property would be. Uh, have some good entertainment opportunities as well because it's pretty large. You have a decent sized retailer there. Um, so I just. Wanted to put that in your guys' mind because it helps me if I have a visual concept to be able to say, okay, look. Service oriented, commercial, retail box, um, you know. Because of the size of the land, what kind of infrastructure is available? Um, you guys should be able to at least tie that down to where you can give us some choices within some of those areas. But at least we can kind of get a layout of of what our opportunities are and so that we don't end up. Burning up some of these potential nodes where we know we're going to need that commercial piece. Um, last thing we want is someone to come in and go, okay, I'm going to build some more houses over here or, okay, um, I have an idea, let's. Let's uh, do this and then next thing you know, um, again, we have one less piece that. A commercial service oriented red type of commercial piece for our residents. Is going to go away and have more of the same. We need to start trying to. Think outside the box on that and I just wanted to bring it up. That's kind of how I'm I'm thinking about it. You put something down on on paper, pencil in some nodes. Give us kind of uh, help us with what we have available. And what we don't. There's still a lot, um, east of Tower, um, you know, but, uh, other than what's east of Tower. Uh, and along along the tower corridor. Really have that piece of hammers and uh, maybe that triangle piece. Um, and the stuff around the stadium. But, um, think about that because if we're going to be sitting down, talking to Cronky and seeing some of these ideas, I think we have to have input on. Service needs for our residents instead of just what they want. I think it has to be. A partnership if we even get back to the table with them, but we have to be able to say. You want this, but we have some needs to and and you passed them up twenty five years ago, but we're due these. These services, so hopefully, um, that'll kind of give you an idea of what I'm looking for.
Will do. Thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim and then Jason.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, thank you all, uh. Jason, Brian and Stuart, I really appreciate the information. It's just the kind of thing that. It helps set a baseline so everybody has some understanding of what's going on. I don't think though that we have been attending this many conferences previously that you are now. Can you tell us what changes have been made in the last year?
Sure, so before we had not even gone to I C S Vegas. And then we started going to that again last year and then we, um, also. Added New York, we added the Dallas conference and then we also are looking at other opportunities for other regional conferences as well. To get a geographic breadth, um, for that outreach efforts. And we're still looking at other opportunities as well. Anywhere we can get in front of those audiences where those retailers may be, we're looking at those opportunities as well.
That's great. So you're being more aggressive about seeking opportunities.
Absolutely, where we think we can connect with those people that are part of that strategy. Yes, absolutely, councilmember.
Okay, terrific. And, um, following up on what councilmember Ford said, uh, something that's been of. Concerned to me are the number of planned unit developments in the north. They're just, um, it's the entire area. It's a whole northern area. I think we learned at our orientation that there were seventy seven planned unit developments in the in the north. And the problem with that is that it allows both commercial and residential. And so it gets to your point, councilmember Ford, that when we think it's going to be used for a commercial purpose. The developer may say, nah, I think I'm going to put in not only houses, but maybe I'm going to put in multi unit, maybe I'm going to put in apartment buildings. Maybe I'm going to do something else, but I'm not going to do a restaurant and I'm not going to do, you know, something else that would be a resident amenity, which. Our residents are, um, uh, really desperate for. They feel like they've been talking about it. A very long time and that was what I heard when I attended the listening session. Uh, you know, they were putting things on the post it notes, but. They had already, in their minds, they felt they had already let us know that multiple times, so. There was a bit of frustration I found at the listening session. You're not going to be able to do post it notes and stickers at the Zoom meeting. So it'll be a different approach than if anybody else wants to participate. That'll be great. Also, just to let other council members know that, uh, the former council was interviewed in September. By the economic development consultants that are doing the doing the report. And we were asked things such as what's our vision and and so forth, you know, what are opportunities, what's a slot? For it and it's been my concern a bit that we have, um, a branding and image issue. That, you know, we could call it something else, but at the same time, we have the news reporting issues. In Commerce City that may not be, um. Anything we have any control over simply because of the nature of the industry. In Commerce City, but that's all people visualize. That's all they see about Commerce City as opposed to. All of Commerce City, unfortunately, but I do think that there are a lot of really wonderful opportunities and with you making the kind of efforts you are. The consultants that are involved in this and, um. I I really am very encouraged. And, um, appreciate all the efforts, so thank you very much.
Hey, manager?
Uh, thank you, Mary, and I I I have to give kudos to to Jason and his team. You know, they came in with a very different operational mindset of how to want to accomplish economic development for the city. Very aggressive, very outbound. Um, I want to go back to what councilmember Duke says about. A real threat and I'm I'm going to ask Jason to expound this. He's sat in meetings with me as well. And when we've had those individuals knocking on our door. That one of their major fears is stagnation. Stagnation of the city and its continued growth based off of the existing comp plan and because stagnation. Equals to limited stabilization. They need population both daytime and and roofs overhead to be able to stabilize under their business model and business program. Count, uh, the mayor Pro Tim made a very, um, very, uh. Great statement about the P U Ds. We have some P U D on with certain parcels that allow anything and everything, the kitchen sink approach as I call it. However, there are also parcels that are specifically identified for residential and the concern about that is not being able to see. The opportunities for those properties that are truly residential to be able to be developed and those properties that are truly commercial to be developed. For commercial, but commercial in a mindset that doesn't no longer exist. You will get some of our notes that we have in our comp plan. And that's hard for my staff, but I'm just going to be honest for them. It's hard with our existing comp plan because it speaks to a retail market that no longer exists. Prime example, if you look at the northwest corner of a hundred and fourth and highway two. West of the, west of the B B N S F tracks. That's considered a power center. That's have two hundred to three hundred thousand square feet of commercial development. That doesn't exist in today's world with how the environment has shifted since two thousand and eight. But there are developers out there that are willing to bring in that experience to retail. But it's having to balance that against what we have placed, which makes it struggle. So part of that is they look at that. They look for that leadership from us as a city and as a community of being able to continue to support the evolution of a city's desires and needs. That balances between the rooftops and the jobs. Not to give one away, but to balance that and to be able to demonstrate that and show that. And with not giving away a potential user, we've had to give data up to ten years ago. And give them predictive data five years from now. Based on how we think we're going to continue to grow because they're looking at that stabilization. And that's part of our reality is when we're talking about those users that you want us to come in, but Jason, if you have anything else to add.
Absolutely, as uh, just to underscore the importance of that is just that momentum that, uh, I'm making a a business decision and I need all the data points. I need to make a. I need to, uh, identify where this, uh, as business investment is most sound. And so when we look at Commerce City as a providing that stability, it just opens up so many more doors for us when we can. Say that we have that balanced approach and our portfolio is solid, so, um, just keep that in mind as we move forward through all the all these discussions you're having, please. Good, um, there's, we have councilmembers who want to speak twice. So I'm going to speak, uh, right now. You know, I would say our, because I was on the council for twenty eleven, twenty nineteen, I could see back then. Our brochures, our economic drive had sun core on the front cover. If you look at it, you would think that's that's downtown comes the lights and everything, then you have to look real hard to see that, no, that's, uh, a refinery. And so our image that was put out there was more industrial. Welcoming, not a combination of moving into the future, okay? So, and I know, I I mean, I don't know, but I'm assuming that we there is no more economic development. Uh, employees from previous. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so pretty much we're kind of starting over here. And so that puts us, you know. Behind the eight ball, basically, because then we have to navigate ourselves without putting an eight ball in the hole. And that's and that's difficult, you know, I hear about, you know, this balance of homes and and all that, but our challenge is the north. As it was stated, was because of how we position ourselves with these metro districts and then we're supposed to have these target centers. Two thousand thirteen city council passed two K dollars. So we did the infrastructure on Tower Road to make it shovel ready by putting into the trunk lines and everything, okay? What what came out of that was a bunch of warehouses on of eighty first, no office flex. That's supposed to be office flex area over there, nothing out of the ground, no office flex. Tech, tech, two thousand and ten concrete, uh, comp plan at tech corridor. Tech has already been, all these things we're talking about have already been identified. So go off the two thousand and ten comp plan. Because the new comp plan should enhance that. To make it more robust to really identify. Where those key areas where key, you know, key drives could go. You talk about the the key performance indicators, the K P I. So, you know, I I I'm not, I I appreciate what you guys are doing and and this this is, this is new, you know, we're talking about entertainment. Because of COVID, now we're looking at a lot of, of young adults in their forties playing video games. Gaming is huge and that will continue to actually. Go much further than it is right now. You know, Las Vegas, they have, you go there and you can. You know, gaming, game competition. So, I mean, I, you know, when it comes to entertainment, uh, we had a talk with with Cronky, they're open. I mean, great, great conversation with them. Let's see, um, you know, when it comes to leakage, it's a billion dollars a year leakage in in leakage. And I remember economic development showing a list. Of what we are saturated with. We have too much convenience stores. Too much, so we, and and then you look at like chicken places and all that, you know, and and dental, but those places also hair, hair place. They're doing business, okay? So what we have to look at with economic development is not only the driver, what is bringing us the money? So what we have to look at with economic development is not only the driver, what is bringing us the money? Okay? Because we talk about cultivation, uh, say marijuana, we don't get a damn off of that. Because they're not doing, they're, they're, they're growing, growing those products and shipping them out. That's when it gets taxed. When it leaves here, we don't get anything. It's what's, but what is sold here? And then, and that's flooding too, you know? So I, I, I would like you guys to have a list of, you know, if we have a billion dollars in leakage, what do we need to do to make sure those businesses can come in? Because the ones that are coming in, we got a lot of them. I mean, we're getting ready to put another gas station over there on, on Tower, I'm sorry, on, on Hundred and Fourth in the Thompson's project, right across from the seven eleven, another convenience store and gas station. So it's just that we have to, you know, and, and, you know, there's places where, hey, that's what they can get, it's fine. It's gonna be sales and use tax coming in, you know, which is great. I'm not knocking it, but that's just what we keep seeing a, you know, a repeat. Let's see, uh, you know, land banking, we talked about land banking, you brought it up. I, I appreciate that because another thing too, business incubators. If we can, you know, ghost kitchens, this is a big thing too. So there's opportunities that we could, it's because, and then, and we talk about, you know, rooftops, but Brighton uses our location. Our kitchen in north to get what they, with what they have today. If we didn't exist up north, the Prairie Center would be dead. It would just be, uh, just a vast amount of open space. They are pulling those numbers out because if you go and look in the parking lot, we had a parking lot counter, I mean, whatever it is, the police officers use. Setting set by high setting percent of those people shopping over there patronizing those businesses, Commerce City residents. And I, and I can tell you, the veterans, the veterinarian place that just came in a hundred twentieth and Chambers, they had to come out here to, to actually see it. There's two of them, one in our bed and all that, but they actually had to come out and see the location. And they're like, how did we miss this? It's like there are, there are missed opportunities from visualization. And so, so, so I'm just saying, if we, if we take this forward, I would like to see a map. So our citizens can, can see the map of where we are working at, when it comes to economic development. And these targeted areas where key guys are working on, that way it is transparent and it's actual real time. Because that way you can, you can say, these are the marks areas we're going, because we have, we have people living in the community who don't realize there's opportunities. So that's all I have. And so good with council member Dukes. And guys, we're going second, keep your comments short because we still have more in our agenda. Okay? Council member Dukes.
Thank you, Mayor. Or, thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say commissioner or chair. So just kind of piggybacking on the discussion and I love what the mayor said about we're kind of behind the eight ball. And, you know, credit the city manager Rogers and the team, having his vision to say, let's be more proactive. But I know it's only a year, year old, right? How can, how can we move faster? And as we're going to the conferences and the idea of like, you have to kind of explain where Commerce City is at and, you know, it's hurt because you're like, it's twenty twenty four and I wish that would have happened ten years ago. How can we move it? One, how can we move forward faster, right? And then two, when you're talking to these other folks at these conferences, how far behind are we? And, and I bring it up as well as council member Douglas around. It feels in some senses like we, we, other cities have made their bets, right? Whether it's Green Valley Ranch and the Target and whether it's Brighton or like Bowie or whatever. And so is that gonna be a threat for us if we don't move faster around not having these anchors or, or not, you know? And I'd love to hear your thoughts on, on that. And then also the other part is what can we do? Like really, what can we do as council that really help if that is, is, if that is an issue?
Ryan, you want to take the second part of them?
Yeah, I would just say that where we have the opportunity is to, we can do more in terms of sending advanced information out to make sure that they have it in advance. We can ask more pointed questions about where we are falling short, if they're willing to share that with us. Sometimes they're not ready to get into that level, though, to say, we're not looking at your market at this time and we'll let you know when that changes. That's kind of their polite, we're done talking. So to where we are trying to, and then the ones where we do get some kind of response, we have them on our tickler, so we follow up with them. To be as aggressive as possible, to keep us front and present and center in their minds to say, don't forget about Commerce City. This is what you said, you know, six, eight weeks ago, you told me this, where are we with this? And then we are where we can, sending them real estate options where we think they might be able to go. We're saying, please consider this option, this space is available, did you know about this development? And so we're trying to keep the conversations and relationships fresh and ongoing. And we, we certainly could try to look at, you know, where we could be probably even more aggressive. And just with the sake or the caveat, if we don't want to become a nuisance or have them shut down on us and not talk to us. Because I will say that there's a certain grocery store chain that everybody in the entire Adams County was calling and they finally just said, stop calling us. And that, that was, that could have been, you know, it was just, there's nothing that can be done about it. But in that case, for that specific retailer, but I think we can do more with the communication and especially get a better understanding of what, what is the shortcoming that they're seeing? And if it's geographic, if it's demographic or what that would look like. And I could help them form our efforts to where we might be need to give you more information to where you could identify, where we could all help each other.
Couple of things come into my mind, council member Duke says, and that's our incentive packages. We could look at, uh, what, let's be aggressive as we possibly can on those. So there's an option there. And part of my role is looking at how, how can we maximize community events, placemaking programs? We have a wonderful, diverse community. Let's celebrate that. I could bring people to these locations. I could bring businesses to these locations. So to me, it's working in tandem with all these things to maximize the potential of our community.
Would that speed us up or get us, get us closer to the, where other people are at?
I mean, I think it, I think it drives the needle forward for us and really elevates us as an opportunity within the Denver metro market. Okay, council member Chico.
I'll be really quick. I feel like it's gonna be supportive of what everybody's kind of saying collectively, especially for parcels and then moving forward. Uh, one thing is equity, small business, they create so much of culture. So it is those hair shops, it is those nail shops, it is those spaces that is kind of trickling those in to pull and maybe connect the north and south. That's a huge deal. Having that type of local chain can also be a marketing strategy too. Um, one thing that we recognized recently, and this was only because my son joined school of rock. All of Adams County does not have a music school, a teaching space, not even an at home instructor. And it's those kind of gaps. And I'm not just talking about Commerce City. I was surprised how photos all of Adams County, we had to go all the way to Brookfield. And then the first thing when they found out, we were, we were just talking to them. The musicians there asked, when are you guys gonna open to exporting goods as a concert venue? So it's those kind of gaps and spaces, I think that it will be really transformative when we're starting to approach these spaces. That it's, I don't know how to take that surveillance or that data specifically, but working with the county to see or local cities to see where those gaps are. And then where we can build them too.
Absolutely.
Okay, council member Douglas.
So, um, would you be open to, like, uh, council member Chico shared her family went to a restaurant this weekend. Local, there's one in Denver.
It's mono mono, the South Korean fried chicken place. It's in Denver.
Yeah. It's so, it's, it's kind of like, um, Deans wouldn't be here if they wouldn't have gone through the mayor's checkout line at King Supers because they were here to, um, look at Aurora and Colorado Springs. But he said, have you considered Commerce City? And it's New Mexico based. And so there's a lot of people that live here from New Mexico. And when they heard Deans was coming here, they were ecstatic. So I think sometimes we should maybe look at opportunities that might not present themselves initially. So that maybe we can start talking to what we'd like to see here and how they could see it as an opportunity because they're welcome. The other thing I was going to ask, is there any possibility, like, can, I would love to see the promenade duplicated here. And I can, I can see it on a hundred and fourth and, and Tower with all those variety of different restaurants that you could go to. But can we like build something like that and then provide leasing opportunities? I mean, just another thought to throw out there. I don't know if it's possible or not, but, and I'm done.
Mayor Phil.
Yeah, um, I have referred restaurants, my favorite restaurants, I have referred. So I would say that's a great thing to do. I think we can also act as, as ambassadors, yep, absolutely. Whenever we're someplace that we really want to be at. Now, does that mean the restaurant has come in? No, not yet, but my fingers are crossed someday it will. My other concern are the number of warehouses, not only we have, but now everybody has warehouses. But residents would like to see a Vasa. We don't have an old Kmart that can have a Vasa in it, but we do have warehouses that might be able to house a Vasa. And, um, uh, River North Brewing on Washington is in an industrial warehouse, right? So they took over the space and you could just go in there and, um, and enjoy yourself. Because warehouses may wind up being overbuilt in our area. So actually converting them to better uses. And that could be entertainment spaces. It could be, um, a place for music. All kinds of things could be in a warehouse because there's a lot of them in Commerce City to test track.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. That's for me.
Council member Kim.
So I like what, uh, Mayor Protem just said, because I was just gonna make that comment too. So I think all of us here can be ambassadors to help out economic development, to reach out to businesses. I will tell you, since last year, every business I've gone to that's outside of Commerce City, restaurant, restaurants, business, whatever the case of business is, I actually would ask, can I speak to your owner? Can I speak to your, uh, whatever it is, right? And I give them my business card, just say, tell them, you know, I'd love to talk to you guys about coming to Commerce City. We are twenty minutes away from the airport. We are, we are twenty minutes away from downtown Denver. I think all of us as a council, just my opinion only, is we could be an ambassador for E, for ED to economic development, better term that way, um, to, to help be a proponent of, of having them come to Commerce City. I just heard you snort and that's on the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Just, I think great kid was at a food truck last Friday. I think he connected with our city manager.
Yeah.
He connected with me. That night we connected with that owner and we're in the process of sending them opportunities. We're in the process of really trying to secure them here in our community. So just a testament to the point that you.
I am begging and pleading to every restaurant I see that's outside of Commerce City to say, please, please, please come to Commerce City. Here's the reason, all the things you guys can do. Be great to have you guys out here. So.
Send them our way. We're, we're aggressive and we're on it.
Our city manager sounds like everybody's, has their thoughts and in behind you.
Very appreciative, very appreciative. Sorry. Like I said, can't say it enough. If you're out there beating, beat the drum with my staff, beat the drum with them. It only helps.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Can call on us if you ever need anybody for a meeting because there's nobody but these people sitting here who love Commerce City more.
Yes.
So we can help make pitches.
Thank you. You will be part of, significant part of our strategy. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank Wayfinders for being patient. So Wayfinders schematic design review itself.
We're grabbing our solos now.
Jason, give me a stack. That's what I use to process this.
That's a good idea though, like, I hate driving.
Yeah. I was a little kid and I actually hit up the, uh, we found one darkness spot. They're not, they opened up seven hundred plus stores. It sucks.
Egg and I or something.
It's like egg and I almost, first watch.
Yes, that's where we're today.
District, district manager. District manager, I actually talked to him. He was actually at the store and he, he was like, yeah, it's, it's, you, they don't want to build in Denver in a county because of their issues there. So I said, here's my quarter space.
All right. Thanks for your patience. Appreciate it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Um, this evening I am excited to introduce John Bosio of March Design, um, who is going to present on the conceptual wayfinding program presentation. Uh, but before we jump into that, I just wanted to review real quickly, what is the purpose of wayfinding? From studies and surveys that the city has done, we realized that the city does not support community or visitors and navigating the city, the city traffic attractions neighborhoods. Um, we are using wayfinding to create city unity and to support diversity by encouraging community connectivity and fostering civic pride. Um, through wayfinding, we aim to create a sense of place by reinforcing our city's brand identity and promoting the different locations and attractions throughout the city. Our goal for tonight is to request feedback on the presentation and the options presented. John.
Thank you, everybody. My name's John Bosio of Merge. We were here, I guess, in October, we presented to council, we met with some stakeholders, we went back and we put together this presentation that includes a wayfinding analysis, um, and, and schematic designs. There's three design options that we'll go through and we're beginning to get feedback as we, as we start to move forward. We'll start with just the wayfinding analysis. Uh, just real quick, this is what's out there. There's, you have signs, you don't have a sign system, right? So what we'll look to do is build consistency in wayfinding and signage that's out there. We are not adding to what's out there. A lot of this stuff comes down and gets replaced with a much more branded, um, community wayfinding program. Some things will stay. Some things are definitely, um, inspiration to us, like a vice and bridge recreation center. But you have, um, all, you know, you have this just outside where it's, you have a blue sign, brown signs, all kinds of signs out there. So, um, the program really is to get a coordinated system in place. Uh, when you think about wayfinding, often people think to be coming to town, we run around, we put up signs everywhere. It's not what we do. Uh, signs are a big part of it. That's what we're looking at tonight. But we think about it holistically, about what kind of information people need and what are the tools that they need to find their way to different places? You know, how are they using their phone to find their way? You know, we get a lot of questions often where people have their phone, why do we need a sign program? A way, community wayfinding program that is hard is to marketing your community, telling people what is available to you. We'll talk a little bit about different tools, but, um, so we do have, um, some suggestions in there about how, if you went through a digital strategy, what kind of elements can be utilized? There's also the environment and how that plays a role in your ability to find your way. So you have, um, a street grid where you have numbered streets. So that does help people, let them know they're going in the right direction. You also have landmarks and we'll look at that as well. Support information, maps, I overheard from out there, I'm talking about maps. So, uh, we'll, we'll talk about maps and having a consistent map that somebody can download before they get here and get an orientation to the town. And then signage, you always think about that as sort of a big picture in gateway elements, vehicular signage, pedestrian parking, those kind of elements. Um, we'll talk about interpretive signs as well. How do you, how do you tell your story of Commerce City as we go through this? So like I said, we did, we do have some recommendations on things that you could think about from a digital wayfinding standpoint, whether that is, um, uh, digital displays or interactive kiosks, mobile apps, how you can make improvements to the website to have things that are downloadable. So I heard earlier about, about maps. So that's one of the things you really need. It's a very good graphic map that gives people an orientation to where they are and really promote the attractions and things you can do here, whether that's shopping and dining, or are there thick places that you can go? Parks and rec are a big piece of what we're trying to promote in the project. These are just examples of another place that we worked with, where you have a regional map, so you show where Commerce City is within the region. And then you can have more detailed maps of different areas within the city to really, um, get into the things that you can do while you are, while you're here. So one of the things we think about when we put together a wayfinding program is the information hierarchy. You know, what is the information people need to get as they make their way from entering into the, into Commerce City, going to different districts, whether that's Derby or Victory Crossing. But one of the things we heard about was the original five towns, um, and those neighborhoods and how that can be, play a part in our wayfinding. Now, in many cases, there may not be a tourism or visitor destination in there, but we thought it was important enough to include as, within the overall thought process of identifying those neighborhoods and maybe having interpretive information that tells the story about the history of those particular places. that tells the story about the history of those particular places. So that is a piece or a tool that can be utilized within the wayfinding program. So you're welcome to Commerce City. You go to a district or maybe a neighborhood, you get told the story. Once you get into the district, you then go to the destination and you make your way through. You have an odd border, right? It's not a clean border. So how do you know when you enter into Commerce City? This is my third time here. I know the first time, your street signs that have the logo on it, that's really helpful. I mean, to let people know when they're coming in and out of Commerce City, that's really helpful. So, you know, we looked at the gateways. There are a handful of gateways that are existing where you have existing signs. They would be low on the list to replace since you have something. But then we've identified other areas where you just want to let people know they've transitioned into Commerce City. And then we started just to look from those gateways in what are some of the major circulation paths that will get us to different destinations? And then we started to outline the destinations. So a lot of them are parks and rec destinations. Obviously the refuge, we have community wayfinding, typical community wayfinding destinations like the high schools, library, and then the commercial areas as well. This is just a list of the destinations and then we, some of them are long. So we, we always sort of just take a shot at abbreviating, abbreviating them. Obviously, we want to get people to the soccer stadium. We want to get people to these four districts, Derby, Greyhound Park District, Victory Crossing, and the 72nd Light Rail Station District. Some of these are ready for signs and some of them are more in the future, but that's sort of what we'll talk about in how you phase this particular project. We do not direct to, we're not allowed to direct to private entities. So we're not directing to businesses or restaurants. We can say shopping and dining as a, as a sort of global umbrella statement, but we'll get people to Civic Justice Center, high schools, library, post office, those kinds of things. There's a developer signs. It's not really part of the wayfinding program. It's its own separate element within the city, but we've seen these in other places. And our recommendation always is to calm them down a little bit, maybe not have them be all those colors and maybe just have them black and white graphics and not to try to use those as wayfinding signs to your attractions. They are a separate layer. They also are sort of third in line of when you give direction, meaning that we have to deal to traffic safety signs. That's the most important location and then our signs. If this is in a location where we need to put a sign, this should yield to us. Bike signs, we just want to include information. If we go into including more bicycle signage, there's a spectrum of design you can start to consider from something that's very standard, that's something that's more customized and matches the design of the program. Interpretable planning. So this is where we start to think about those original neighborhoods or original towns, names and how we could tell the story of those places. So we thought it was important to not only direct people to attractions, but maybe tell the story of each of these neighborhoods. And then that would work with the community to develop what the content and what the story might be and what kind of element it may be, if it's a totem or an interpretive panel. We can sort of work through that with the, with the neighborhoods, but we'll give it outlined within the, within the program. So we, we think telling your story is an important part of this project. We started to break it down after we talked to staff and stakeholders of what this project can become. We came up with this, what is a generic menu of sign types. So no design applied to it just yet, but just breaking it down as to how you could group them and do this over phases. Rarely does a community wayfinding program just drop out of the sky all at once and it's, it's done. It's usually in, in two or three phases. So you could look at the city identification as like primary, secondary and boundary gateways. You could look at the neighborhood signage, a neighborhood ID marker, maybe a banner. And then interpretive elements, that's sort of its own group. And then you have park and trails wayfinding. You could look at a signed standards manual for your parks as well, really getting that under a consistent language of signs. And then future wayfinding. So we're talking about economic development as you grow and different areas are ready for signs. You then have a signed standards manual that's ready. You don't have developers just putting up signs, you know, based on just sort of left and right. So really coming up with current wayfinding and then future attractions and wayfinding is really the two groups that the manual can fall into. I'll pause maybe for any questions? There's never questions about the wayfinding analysis. It's always about the design.
I see a problem with signage and, for instance, the cup just opened up in Greyhound Park. And I mean, nobody knows where that place is at. There isn't no signage around. Or the signage that they had is not working.
Right.
I don't.
Yeah, so this is something that might be, I'm a system.
I have a question. Councilmember.
Thank you for, so question about the wayfinding and identifying neighborhoods. Like Adam City, for example, and I love the historical part of it. Would you, would you have the sign on both sides in your Adam City? Or like, can you explain what, what that would look like?
Yeah, so that's one thing that we're still working through. I don't think that you're necessarily directing to the neighborhoods unless you decide that's, that's important. It's really an identification sign for that and you have to, we have to look at the boundaries and where that might be. So we were thinking identify, an identifier and then something that tells the story.
How do you budget this? So there are multiple layers of signs that you're talking about and how extensive it becomes. So it seems to me you need to ballpark each of these.
Yeah, so with the information we've gathered to date, we will start to do that. So for example, the gateway map that I had up there, we have, okay, these are the primary gateways. So these are sort of the wow gateways where you're going to spend a lot of money. And these others are just boundary markers where it's a $500 sign. So we can start to look at that based on the information we have now as well as the destinations and how we're breaking this up. So we will start to provide an order of magnitude budget so that you can start to think about it that way. Thanks.
Other customers?
So we have three design options. Some of the design considerations as we went through this, sort of the existing brand and colors and how we can utilize that. There were architectural details. We really liked the architecture out at the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. That was sort of gave us influence. There are some gateway signs out there. You'll see a design that actually reflects that. And then there's just the experience and the history of the place and how we can bring that into it. What you'll see is sort of a spectrum of design where in the first one, when we start to think about the branding, you know, sort of this, this logo is sort of upfront. And as we go into each design option, it sort of drops back and then becomes even, even sort of a tertiary element. So this is option one. Option one does take the, does take an influence from that existing sign that's out there with the white background and gray trim. You'll see on all the sign, all the options, we're using some real standard sign types. So we have, you're going to have a lot of larger sign types that are out on the higher speed road. So we are required from the manual for traffic control devices to have six inch high copy when the speed limit is over 25 miles per hour. When you have multi-lanes and you got to get over, that's the scale of the, of sign. So we'll see a higher speed sign. On the back of the sign, we have the logo. Then we have a park trailblazer. So we think getting people to parks is, is an important piece. And then you can move into pedestrian elements, which you see as a kiosk where you would have the map. And then you have an interpretive totem in this, in this design option. This is the element that could appear in, in the different neighborhoods telling that particular story. And then we just had some alternates up top as to what the background of this sign could be. So here you'll see, so this is option one. Again, the higher speed and the sort of smaller gateway element. Park trailblazer where we're using pictogram so we could not only give the name of the park, but say what you can do in that park. So promoting that as part of things you can do. At the end, the kiosk with the map and then an interpretive totem. So option two. Option two, we're still utilizing the logo, but it's sitting back a little bit more. It's, it's only at the gateways and on the back of the sign. And then we're using more natural materials. So again, we're looking at either wood or the color of wood for the poles. And we have more sort of brackets that are reminiscent of what you see at the, at the rec center. We're just using the typeface Commerce City. So we did think that it's important that, like I was saying on the street signs that you know, you're always, you always know that you're in Commerce City. We wanted to make sure that that was at the top, but we're not, not getting tied into the logo too much. Signs last 25 years. If that logo were to change, you'd have to change all the signs. So we sort of brought it back. It does appear as a graphic element on the back. And then there's alternates at the top there where not only is it a graphic alternate, but you could cut it out and have dimension letters. Again, here are the higher speed directional signs. Here's more of sort of the detailing of a, of a kiosk. We're pulling that in from some of the architecture. We're putting the logo on the side. And then there's the interpretive panel, again, just telling the story. Then option three, we go even farther. This was an idea where you could have a graphic element that identifies, you could do it either identifying different areas of the cities, but we really also thought about it as just a eclectic collection of things that you could do in Commerce City or reflect at Commerce City, maybe the history of it. And you make that part of the, part of the design. And then you're punching out Commerce City in the, in that header panel. So you could have at the bottom, the name of the district you're in. And then again, these have more sort of a natural material look and feel to it. Again, it's Commerce City and then you have a, it's not one icon for the city. We were, we were trying to stay away from that. But it would be a collection of, of different elements. So these are soccer and Mexican-American heritage and then also just nature as a, as an element. So again, in here, the logo really sort of goes away a little bit more. It does appear when you're at a kiosk, but that's something that can change out a lot. Again, the park directional sign and then interpretive. So here we've dropped each of the three options in so you can see what it looks like in the environment. It always changes a lot and when it's, it just looks like papers. So it's option one, then option two, and then option three. That I'll take.
Councilmember Kim?
I like the third option, first off. I'd like to know how much that's going to cost as well, right? Was there plans to have signs for bike, for cycling, for cyclists?
Yeah, so we, that would be part, we just took a handful of sign types, but we would expand that out to the, to the bicycle signs.
That's all I got. Thanks, Mayor Proton.
Yeah. I favor the third one also. I would assume the laser cuts are more expensive than going without, but it's, it's really fun.
Yeah.
You know, and it, I had observed when looking at the three options before that it was an image of Commerce City that we're trying to get away from in terms of the colorway. It, it really screamed sort of industry and air pollution to me because it was brown. All three of them are brown designs as opposed to maybe a shade of green, you know, green and blue. Even your own presentation at the beginning, your, your sign presentation, the schematic, was all colors, right? And this is all brown. All three of them have brown as the dominant color. And look, we have green trees, we have expansive blue skies, we have mountains, we have really wonderful assets in Commerce City that, that we should highlight. And I would love to see this sign with a different color combination.
I always say, if we're down to color, I can solve that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say it though, like, that's why we're here.
We're colorful, yep.
But I love three.
I also like three, maybe just because, and this, I'm sure if you said he has this problem, how durable are these signs? I see signs taken out every other day.
Yeah, sure. So there's, there's always a maintenance element to signage. Certain, there's breakaway elements, there's, it has to be reflective vinyl. There's warranties that come with the paint, with the vinyl. That's it.
That was a question. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
You know, over the years, I saw a lot of different sign changes. We had a huge monument that was at Highway 80, Highway 85 at 60th Avenue. Rocky probably remembers it. Brick, mortar, this half circle. You remember with the three Cs? And, and you know, I'd like to get down to something, and I like three as well. But get down to something where as we change off of this council, that every four years, every six years, we're not changing the damn signs. We're building upon them, you know, get something structured. And, and I like that. One of the things that is really frustrating to me, I like these banners. We have these banners up Tower, up Quebec. The downside is every other one of them's hanging off, you know, by one pole. And I, I think when I drive by it, I go, oh, that doesn't look so good.
Right.
You know, and, and I think that there is that maintenance philosophy of it because we put in new poles, we put these banners, we even invested in more banners. And I know we have a team of guys and I worked in that department. I, I, I know what they do and I know how busy they are. However, these are our main corridors. And when you drive down them and you see, you know, poles laying on the ground or banners hanging off on, you know, barely hanging on, whatever, or they're torn or ripped. I think that goes against the sense that I, I really believe we have to start building more pride in this community and focus on really some of the good things we're doing and how well we're doing it. We went and, and I'm not beating anybody up here and I'm, I'm just trying to say what I need to say. We had a person, they're no longer here. And we went through and we had a ton of residents that were saying, hey, we really need some new updated type of Christmas decorations. You know, the residents wanted to see not these old Christmas, Christmas decorations, some new stuff. We got talked into the banners and then to the Christmas decorations. I think it really frustrated a lot of our residents. Not just in the southern portion of the city, but in the northern portion. I think that they like the lights. So, you know, I, I really think that on some of this stuff, I would like to get feedback from our residents. But however, anything, anything that we take to the residents, I have to be adamant that we have a maintenance program in place that keeps them looking fresh because a lot of, a lot of things have happened in this community for many, many years, not just with this staff that we have now or with the council we have now, but a lot of years because I, I grew up here. I've been around here forever. And you get something new and then all of a sudden, you know, paint's peeling off the light poles, banners are hanging down. And it's like, really, we spend this money, you know? I want to, I want to, and Jason's been doing really good at this. Building the pride piece, right? You're going to have something nice, we're going to spend the money. It's hard for me to take what this project would cost to the residents and say, look what we're going to do for you, without being to go, by this time, we have a maintenance plan in place and we're going to make sure if they get knocked down, we're going to have a plan to have them replaced and put back up within X amount of days, you know? If they, if they start peeling or something, something happens. We have to have a plan to maintain them because I've seen a lot of really nice stuff happen in this community for the right reasons. And then it just kind of falls apart.
And you're right about that.
So that's big to me.
We, we noticed that about the one, the first time with the banners was that, I understand it's sort of a catch 22. It works really well to identify, but they are, there's a lot of them in the maintenance and sort of the climate that you have with the wind. there's a lot of them in the maintenance and sort of the climate that you have with the wind, it's really difficult. So. But you should also know that part of our scope is to come up with a maintenance plan for this.
But well, but on that, you say that, but I will tell you when, when, because I thought the same thing. We got the wind, you know, this is stuff that's not in our, you know, not, not something that we created.
Right.
But I'm going to tell you, I could drive to the town of Brighton, they got colorful flower baskets hanging off their poles and their banners. I don't see them hanging by one leg.
Right.
I don't know what their maintenance plan is. But I think we ought to be able to do just as good or better than Brighton.
Councilor Lewis.
Thank you for the presentation. I I do like the third choice. I didn't like the Browns at all, so I was real happy to hear somebody else bring up the fact that the Browns are, I don't think represented who we are as a vibrant community. What I want to know is how how expensive is this going to be? And 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 I can see that in the stage that we're at right now, this going forward is probably justified, but how can I say that to my residents who don't have sidewalks or proper drainage for their streets and and things that affect their daily living and they're going, why are you spending money on, I mean, I even heard it about the two hundred and fifty thousand that was spent on the banners before, I mean, the the council approved it. But then people who are listening to that council meeting, I got, I got those calls, why did you guys approve that? And that's a lot of money and we we should be spending it over here for something that's more conducive to where the the needs are of the the community. So they see it as something that's like a luxury item. And it's just, it's really expensive to me. Do we know how much? I mean, how about even you being here, is that costing us money?
So part of this project is to create the plan, and this is the planning stage of it. Once we get, again, through the feedback that we've had through the study sessions, every time we get your feedback, we incorporate this to to be able to present to you, this is what our wayfinding would look like. In that then is an implementation plan. That would say, okay, if we want it all implemented at one time, this is going to be the cost, which you're right, would probably be a lot of money. So then how do we phase that so that it is more affordable? What are the the points that we want to focus on first? Is it those those entry points? Is that our first priority? So we look at that, what does the cost of that look like? And then how do we phase in the other parts of this program? Again, we we understand the cost of this is quite a bit. And I don't think any of us anticipated us creating this and giving it to you and saying, okay, we want this done in a year's time, make it happen. You know, kind of a fun challenge, but I don't think it's a realistic one. So that's that's kind of our our next steps. We understand that cost is a big deal and a big component to this. And so that's what during the final presentation, once we get all of this together, that's when some of those things will be talked about is how do we then phase this project? And is this something that, you know, what elements do you like on this project? What elements do you not want on this project? And then how do we tailor it?
Yeah, I would also just sort of think, especially with your project after we've talked through the different groups is that it's not all just one big project over like a one or two year period, but you want to do is think of it over the very long term, ten, fifteen, twenty years. That's how long signs last. And then as you grow, you have this document that is a guideline for doing signage as it goes forward. At first, it's probably going to be little bits and pieces that are implemented based on need and based on available funding. So, yeah, I don't want you to think that it's like, oh, it's a two-year thing and it's, I think you have to spread it out over time.
And maintenance is part of that.
And I appreciate you coming back and and presenting again because the last time we heard was like, September, October, something like that. So.
So this is the second step, and then we'll come back with a more detailed plan.
Mr. Prey, yeah, I just want to jump in and say a couple of things. One question is, you know, why would we do this? Well, we talked earlier in the economic development session about image and projected image. This is a way to help change our image and help project a different image and show people what is Commerce City, where is Commerce City? So.
Well, and that's what I said with with, I can, I can see the need for it. Especially at this point where we are going forward. We just have to know how to justify it to the expense and to explain the expense that is over time. So, I mean, thank you for answering my questions, but I want you to understand as well, Jim, that
this was all very different.
I know, I just want to be called Christie and everybody. But yeah, and and I included that in what I said to begin with. I I think this is really necessary going forward so that we we are uniform and we're presenting a different image for our city. It's just knowing how to bring this to our people who live here and.
We've got to help them understand that. The other thing is, from a maintenance standpoint, I I don't know how many years ago, but it's going on twenty probably. First time I met John, he did a project for the city I was working in. Every time I go to the newspaper or online and look at that city now, somewhere in there are one of those signs, the maintenance program that was put together. And I is, and we expect that here is it's kept those signs looking good and maintained. One of the things, the city had a pedestrian mall. And it's the businesses change on that mall all the time. We did a a pedestrian set of signs. Those have to be updated every two years. And so it's, they're done with that. That's a key part of what we do because it doesn't do any good to put them up and have them fade, have them, you know, lose letters or whatever. So I just want to say, I mean, that's, those are things that we put together, the RFP, we put in there and felt like were really, really important. And the reason these guys got chosen is they have a tremendous track record of delivering early services to a community with a maintenance manual that comes with it in addition to you know, the pretty designs you get.
I said this probably in the first meeting, we don't build signs. So I'm not here to sell you more. We want to do wayfinding with the least amount of signs. So just feel comfortable with that, partner. The Councilor Ford, you had a follow-up question.
Yeah, just because, you know, I'm sitting here looking at that picture. Jim, I I agree. It's it's an image thing, right? But I sit here and look at that picture, and you know what I see? I see the fact that there's a commercial piece of property right there that's set twenty years. And I want to, I want to tell you, I I think it's important because looking at this picture, the sign looks great and and you're starting to, you know, it's an image thing. It's that pride thing. But you know what I see? I see elm tree suckers that have been on that property far too long. And I see them all over town on these potential commercial properties. I bring it up because we just talked about the economic development piece. This is an image piece. And when you, when we have our economic development people come in here and and they see this property, I would really like to see it without a bunch of elm tree suckers. We have the same thing, one hundred and twentieth and Chambers there by Santiago's, that whole property that's for commercial development. Full of suckers and stuff like that. It'd be great to start identifying some of the things that really ugly up our town. And how do we make it better to start providing a better image and build that pride? I don't think the signs are a bad start, but I really think you can take a picture anywhere in Commerce City and I can point something out that is an image problem. And those trees, as soon as you said image, those trees are the first thing that came to my mind. I would love to have a plan to deal with with it with a broad stroke rather than, you know, because I've seen the signs, the signs that he put up that had the different home builders, Meritage, Oakwood, whatever. That was a thing to get rid of all the signs that the home builders were sticking in all over the ground. That was something that the city had done. Unfortunately, you know, they get either knocked over by by someone driving or a snowplow gets them with snow. The woods rotten off the bottom. And I've seen some of them lay on the ground for way, party long. And I think the people that are building the homes must have had enough exposure because they don't make it a point to go, hey, our sign's down, we need to put that, get that put back up. They're the ones that are losing business because of it. So I think if we're going to focus on some of these things to help from an image perspective, I'd I'd like to identify some of the other things that come along with it because you can put that sign up, but it's not helping a lot with all those trees in the background that shouldn't be there. Because those trees are just going to get bigger.
That was your question?
That's my comment.
No, no, it was a comment. I just couldn't hold back.
Councilor Dukes.
I like option three as well, and I like the the concept of like we invest in ourselves, invest in our city is going to, others are going to want to invest in it. And so I do agree with Councilor Ford, like how that plays out comprehensively. I think that's important. I also want to piggyback, I do like the idea of a different color scheme. And whatever that may be, but really show them the the vibrant and the the energy, which I I I'm glad you brought that up because when I saw that, yeah, I think it'll be great to do.
Councilor here.
Yeah, I I think it's, you know, like putting a fresh coat of paint on, right? It goes a long way to really change the image of something. So I like the two and three because they're, you know, not incorporating that that old sign and I'm colored blind, so that light green is terrible, impossible to read. So I kind of like these darker colors, the the white lettering, just for the simplicity of, you know, being able to to read them. But yeah, I think, you know, when we start this, we should definitely focus on those major gateways and then the culturally significant areas to really get signage around there and and just knowledge about the history because it's kind of gotten lost over the years as the city's grown and you know, a lot of people, the stories are going with them. So I think it's important to get those while we still can and you know, really document them and and try to get that to the community back into the city that I think we've kind of lost over time and you just get so big and so many new people that.
That's what we heard. That's why I wanted to make sure that sign type is in there. All right, Councilor Teeter.
This property don't have nothing to do with your signs, but twenty years ago, I, after we bought that Buffalo to put out a Buffalo Run, I wanted to put a not a sign up, but I wanted to put a message up. When you get close to that Buffalo, I wanted a motion detector to to fire off a voice message saying, first, first of all, I wanted a grunt from a buffalo. Scare the hell out of them. And then I wanted a nice friendly voice to come on to say, welcome to Buffalo Run Golf Course. And then a little short story about our restaurant.
And that one scared people.
Well, I know, but it would be something they would remember. And 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 it would be something they talked about and something that would bring more people up.
Must be that moose at that.
Exactly, Wally Moos. Yep, yep, same type of thing. But but anyway, that property doesn't have nothing to do with your.
I can make the signs grumble.
I think there was a lot.
Did you want two or three?
Three.
All right. I might repeat what everybody else said. I think I appreciate whatever, pray by oyster, what they like, and I like three as well. And as far as colors, I mean, you know, I don't mind so much the brown on top because it's rustic. It it kind of flows. The other colors can change. And in my opinion, maybe maybe the brown should be black or something. But just to show that we are putting money in the right way, you know? And as far as design, this is, this is image to me. And then when it comes to like later on, because this could be a formality, you're going to see the same type of signs close to everything, right? Right now, we, our, our public works, they make signs, they make street signs, right? Would it be something the city should invest in to make a uniform design to to have a laser cut? So there's companies that actually do that. They actually, they do laser cuts. You have a laser cut machine, cuts the metal. And then that way, because it's, because they're all going to be uniform, like I said, they're all going to be the same, you know, dimensions. That way it's continuous throughout throughout there. Not saying that they they start out that way, but just a learning process for later on when we adopt this. We can change things and add, and then that way kind of transition, maybe cost-wise, whatever that would be, right? And then as far as like the banners, incorporate something that deals with LED lighting, because a lot of cities use that as artwork. So you corner down the corridor, you have a LED strip that you can change the colors. So when it comes to the holidays, you're changing the colors and actually getting people to say, hey, I love, I love this corridor and then focus on it. You know, just, just as an option. But if, you know, we can move something like this to to end house later on in the years because it's got to be going to have signers over here and to export a good part, anywhere that's new development or so. But that's just my suggestion. Then the fact we got the arsenal. You know, always have the buffalo. So you next to Arsenal, you have the black-footed ferret, burrowing owls, you know, there's three hundred, three hundred different, thirty, three hundred thirty different species on that wildlife. But maybe, maybe just find a few, right? So leading into corridor, going up into the the wildlife ravage. So, you know, kind of really expand on this and 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 just enhance. And that way, you know, when it comes to education and all that, we can it can be part of it too, you know, the the history and where we're at today. But though I I appreciate this, I'm looking forward to it. So thank you very much. Any other council members? Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do I need a five-minute break? Do I need a bathroom break? Five minutes.
You can keep going if you want. I'll be.
Five minutes.
Can we even hear?
Councilor David, I think the iconic signs will actually be the same thing. History of stuff, I think that's the, those will actually incorporate some of our original ideas. It may not be voice, but it'll be, you can touch and it'll be able to go through the history of stuff. So we may want to think about just putting that type of sign over my Buffalo Run. Right, like a prompt so they can see the history. So I think that's how you want to like.
There's a lot of people don't know there's even a restaurant.
Yeah, or or is the city, that was my first time I learned, is the city actual building, right? You know, so.
Yeah, we need some way eleven though.
Better chairs over there. Honestly, any of these chairs. Oh, okay. We just don't, yeah, we have three chairs. Wherever you all. You know how to make PDFs.
Is there a? And I have like the professor and the teacher that I should like to background.
Oh, full screen. I was gonna say try and full screen. Oh, full screen. I was gonna say try and full screen. I like this one, Lord District.
They can relax and go in their turnaround. They sneak up on the curb.
You're like the fish Iowa. We know honestly have. The seizure. I was like, hey, we're on the race. We started with a lab because we ended up getting. We have another room that we.
So just thinking about, we can also literally attract and probably like the world is just as much. They're gonna take care of you.
We're trying to make it.
Yeah.
We have to put up a watch you on that.
So great, so well, I guess I would go to that one and then it's gonna go. They were supportive of the.
No, I haven't been talking all day. I've been out. You know what I did all weekend? I stayed inside on my couch with my grandma. I could tell you I'm not. I had to go to the chiropractor. I think that was a lot. He also, uh, so a lot of my migraines, my neck, I have a temporary that's rotated. And so he adjusted and then I lay there, it's ice in my back, I'm trying to ice pack. Why the doctor to. I'm trying to ensure the icing, but that's.
And there's spaces for.
Sixty dollars a visit. And that's whether or not I get ice.
I saw this slide. I saw this slide. And Charles. So I mean, you're talking about my hair.
See? Well, I do that at home. And my migraine got me. But only if he goes somewhere that I'm trying to, I really, I didn't. Yeah, I mean, I can be paralyzed and I can, you know, my migraine.
All right, we're ready to reconvene. Let's go to the next one, a business case, because that's with energy performance. So Jenna, can you go ahead in there?
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Cartem and City Council. My name is Jenna Han. It's nice to see you all this evening. So I am here tonight in partnership with Schneider Electric to discuss energy performance contracting with you all. And while I will let Kate Sipla get into the meat of what energy performance contracting is, I want to provide you some background on how we got here. So staff has been having conversations with the Schneider team for well over a year now. And in August of 2023, we actually entered into a sole source contract with them. Under that contract, Schneider has conducted a no-cost business case um for Commerce City to determine the financial and technical um viability of entering into an energy performance contract with the Colorado Energy Office. So again, we'll define what all that means later in the presentation, but um, and Kate will dive into the findings of that no-cost business case. But in a nutshell, that business case looked at the potential savings as well as the positive economic impact that could be enjoyed by the city if we were to enter into an energy performance contract. So that business case that Schneider put together for us provided us with a plethora of viable information, including a current state of operations analysis, which had potential cost savings estimates, the identification of potential solutions for advancing organizational goals, and a financial analysis for savings and overall economic impact of entering into an energy performance contract down the road. So Kate's going to jump in here and talk about what energy performance contracting is, go over some findings of that business case that she and her team conducted for us, and then we'll reconvene with staff and talk about next steps. So Kate?
All right, everyone. Good evening. Mayor, Mayor Cartem, Council. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Kate Sipla with Schneider Electric, and I have Will Gissler from my technical team with me this evening, as well as Charlie Stevens from the Colorado Energy Office. So we'll do kind of an EPC one-on-one, an energy performance contracting one-on-one. We'll explain what the program is, how it works. Um, and then we'll go over the results of our business case that we conducted to share the potential impact that this would have for Commerce City. So some quick introductions. I will let Charlie introduce himself briefly here.
How you doing? I'm Charlie Stevens. Been in the Energy Office about a year now, supporting the Energy Performance Contracting Program. It's a program that's been with the state for about twenty-five years and it's been going on. So it's been, we've got some well-tested contracts and it lowers the risk for cities and counties and universities and school districts to, to get uh some efficiency projects done on their buildings.
Hey. And again, I'm Kate Sipla with Schneider, Schneider Electric, and I am the local government rep for the state of Colorado. So I'm local here. I understand our um unique legislation that we have um that governs the EPC program. And a little bit of background on Schneider Electric, it's probably the biggest company you've never heard of. Uh, we are global and our public sector business has done over $2 billion in guaranteed energy savings improvements for public agencies across the country. So we have a lot of experience in this arena. So you've got the wealth of knowledge from a large company, a lot of resources, but also local boots on the ground that understands the unique challenges we face here in our state. Okay, so what the heck is EPC? Um, so this was developed by the EPA about forty years ago as a funding mechanism for doing energy efficiency projects in public agencies. Um, the stipulation specific to Colorado statute, each state has slightly different rules centered around how this works. Um, Colorado has a very strong statute governing um what me and my team do. Um, we have to prove that the project will be cash neutral or positive. Essentially, we have to prove that the improvements that we're pitching are going to pay for themselves within a certain amount of time, usually about twenty years. Um, there is a pre-qualified list of what's called energy service companies or ESCOs. Schneider Electric is a pre-vetted ESCO through the Colorado Energy Office. Every five years, we go through a really rigorous um solicitation process where we have to prove our financial stability, customer satisfaction on other projects that we've done. So you can rest assured, we've already gone through a very competitive selection process and the Energy Office has already vetted us as a qualified partner to implement these projects. Um, the unique thing about Colorado is a guarantee behind the energy savings that stipulated. So for the, at least the first three years after the construction of one of these projects is completed, we have to give annual reports to the Energy Office proving that the improvements we made to the buildings are actually saving the amount of energy we promised you. They check our math, and if there is a shortfall, Schneider Electric would have to write a check to Commerce City to make up the difference. So again, the first three years are, you know, per statute, if you wanted to pay a nominal fee to continue that guarantee, just for peace of mind, that is an option. Um, some people take it, some people are so confident and they end up realizing even more savings than we predicted, that they feel comfortable going without that guarantee after the first three years. Uh, but just know that there is very low financial risk and um the Energy Office is with you every step of the way, making sure that your private partner, Schneider, is doing what we say we're going to deal with. So why would a public entity engage in an energy performance contract? First of all, because this is self-funding, because it is cash flow neutral or even positive, there's no burden to your taxpayers. We're not using taxpayer dollars to do these improvements. And when I talk about the improvements, I mean um energy efficiency updates to municipal-owned facilities and assets. So parks, the building you're in right now, um electric vehicle chargers for your eventual fleet conversion to electric vehicles for public works, so police, for example. So everything I'm talking about is referring back to municipal-owned facilities. Um, another really great aspect of this program is that it is completely turnkey. So in a traditional sense, when you're trying to get a construction project done, you do design, bid, build. The program allows for Schneider to do the design at a very low cost so that it removes barriers to entry for the city. Um, and then that dovetails nicely into Schneider actually managing the project, managing all the subcontractors, again, taking on a lot of the risk during the construction period so that everything is seamless from start to finish. This is gonna take a lot of lift off of city staff. Um, whereas they would traditionally bid out each of these individual projects or scope items, takes a lot of time, a lot of paperwork, a lot of product management. Schneider would essentially act as your general contractor throughout the entire process. Um, again, we talked about the savings guarantees and there are already state attorney general approved templates for any of the contracts that would be needed to enter into an, an energy performance contract. So it takes a heavy lift off your city attorney. Um, these have already been written out. There's a little bit of customization because of course every city is different. Um, but just rest assured, this has already been laid out and Schneider has actually already agreed to that base template. So there's not a lot of legal back and forth that typically happens. Um, the cost of design and engineering, I mentioned it was a lot lower to remove that barrier to entry. The cost of the design and engineering period, we call it the investment grade audit. I'll go over this in a moment. Typically, we see it about a fifth to a tenth of the typical cost of paying a firm to do the engineering for a construction project. So um you don't owe any of that upfront. It usually gets rolled into eventual financing for the project. So there's no money out of pocket to even get this started. Um, so there's a lot of benefits to entering in this next phase of the investment grade audit. Um, we know that leading by example is a really big deal for the city to show its constituents that, yes, you're making strides. You've already spent a lot of time and money on your sustainability action plan and your strategic plan. Um, we wanna demonstrate that Commerce City is willing to do what it takes to make improvements, improve the environment, be more energy efficient, do water conservation, what have you. We can't ask our constituents to do anything we're not willing to do ourselves, right? So this is a great way for you to kind of supercharge some of the action plans that you already have in place. Um, and then double dipping, you know, we know that there's a lot of grant funding available right now, especially the Inflation Reduction Act has a lot of money for things like water conservation, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Um, that money, if you were to receive a grant, can be added to the cash flow of the project to make it more advantageous, reduce your loan principal, get more scope items done, whatever you might need. So it's a really great time to take advantage of those additional grant dollars. Schneider does have in-house grant support. Um, so we know that you have also made the investment and hired some folks on your team to handle that so we can work together and tackle those grant applications together to ensure it's a really solid application that can actually happen. So how does this work in theory? So the, the bottom that you see that's over time, so we are on the left side right now with the unidentified savings potential and your annual operating costs and budget. So what we look at is the unidentified savings potential, which we've identified some things on the results of our business case, but the next step in that investment grade audit will help us get down to a very granular detail of, okay, if I switch out the light bulbs in this room to LEDs, how much is that gonna save me over the next twenty years? Um, so once those savings are identified, then when you move to construction, you will take out a loan. It's called a tax-exempt lease purchase. Um, it won't affect your um bond ratio or it's, it's very different debt than you might be used to, but because you're using the future energy savings in order to pay for the loan, it essentially cancels itself out. Um, and then you've got those savings guarantees thanks to the Energy Office to make sure you're able to make that annual loan repayment without coming up short. I'm gonna pause right there because this is a lot of information. Just wanna make sure there aren't any questions before I move forward.
Questions from council? Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, I mean, so there's a prescriptive process for moving through all of the different stages and we've gotten a couple of steps in. Again, we've been working together for almost a year now behind the scenes. Um, and so we're at the point where we're ready for that detailed assessment, that design and engineering phase. The point of the business case, which I'll go over the results of that in a moment, is to determine the financial viability. Again, we have to prove this is gonna pay for itself, so we wanted to take a look around. We looked at your utility bills. We worked on a workshop with staff to figure out, okay, what, what's the need? And is there a way to fund this? And what we found was really encouraging. So it's the recommendation that we would move to the next step of the investment grade audit. After that, you move into the construction phase. Again, Schneider would be handling that as your general contractor, making sure that goes smoothly. And then once construction is completed, you move into that measurement and verification period where the Energy Office makes sure you're saving what was promised. So in order to conceptualize this a little bit better, and especially after the lengthy economic development discussion we had this evening, I thought it would be good to have a case study up here of what this looks like in practice. So this is a project that Schneider Electric has done over about the last four years in Sierra Vista, Arizona. It's a community of about forty thousand people, so a little bit smaller than Commerce City. But I wanted to share the immense impact one of these EPC projects had for them. So when it started out, they were evaluating several different companies. It was looking like maybe $2 million worth of construction that they could do because it was only gonna generate $2 million worth of energy savings over that twenty-year period. And we went in there with a different vision and said, okay, anybody can do a $2 million LED light bulb retrofit. Let's talk about who you wanna be as a city. And what we found out was, you know, we'd really love to revamp our sports complex, but it's gonna cost tons of millions of dollars and we have absolutely no idea where that money's gonna come from, how we're gonna manage that. We see people from our community driving to neighboring communities on the weekends for Little League tournaments, soccer games. They're taking their money elsewhere. We wanna bring that back in. So we found a way to make all of these improvements you see on the left under the solution tab. We also helped them secure over $7 million in grants to help fund this project. And when we looked after the first about year and a half, two years, this wasn't part of the savings guarantee. This was just gravy on top. They estimate that they're bringing in about an extra $3 million a year in sales tax revenue. Because now people are coming to their city for Little League tournaments. They're spending money on their hotels, their restaurants. And people wanna move there because they've got these great amenities. They wanna work there. So it's really revitalized this community, and I think that there's potential for us to do something similar. in Commerce City. So we'll have some really deep workshops as we get into this to make sure this isn't just a nuts and bolts construction project. This could really be transformational for the city in terms of even branding, the, the little droplet that you see there, our marketing team helped them with this energy initiative and make a brand out of it. And we put signage up around town. We did a social media campaign. So there's some marketing and PR that we can bring to the table as well to share with the community, the investments that you're making. So this has the potential to be a lot bigger than just a traditional construction project. And we're really excited about the possibilities, especially here in Commerce City. So we know that you already have a couple of plans in place. There's lots of big ideas, a lot of vision behind this. How do we put this into action? The energy performance contract has the potential to touch every single one of these things you see on the screen right now. And we'll make sure that we keep these goals top of mind every step of the way, so that this is actually advancing the goals you've already set for yourself. You might even notice some of these are five to eight-year goals. These are things that we might be able to move the timeline up on. We might be able to get these done in two or three years. You won't even have to wait as long as you thought to get some of these things done. So we'll keep this in the back of our mind every step of the way and make sure we're in line with, with your plans. So to get into the business case that we performed, what we did was a high level utility analysis. So we looked at all of your energy and water bills from the last two to four years. We actually did site visits to all of the municipal facilities and several of the parks so that we could get eyes on it, talk to people who work in those buildings, understand the challenges that are, are being had. And then we did a vision mapping workshop with a lot of the staff that's in the room here tonight to get a better understanding for maybe some other challenges that aren't written down somewhere that we need to be aware of and challenges that we have the potential to, to help fix. So the objectives obviously were to figure out, okay, is this something that could pencil out? Is this something that can be in that cash flow neutral, cash flow positive mode? Making sure it's in line with your sustainability plan and your strategic plan. And just gather a lot of data that was missing to even figure out if this would be a good project for everyone to throw their time and resources at. And the results were very encouraging. So we identified quite a few areas for improvement throughout the facilities in these different categories. And what you see underneath the categories is straight from your sustainability action plan. So these are goals you've already outlined for yourself. All of these scope items can be included in an energy performance contract. You know, things like lighting, we noticed that the, the lighting at Pioneer Park is sometimes on until 11 o'clock at night and there's no way to remotely manage that, turn things off. You know, if it's a blizzard, nobody's going to be using the park. So let's try and turn the lights off that night. These are very simple, low hanging fruit things that we can do. In fact, when we were at Bison Ridge, under the, the water category there, there was actually a, a gasket on one of the pool pumps that was leaking. And it was great that we happened to be there that day. Of course, your maintenance person got it fixed right away, but if nobody went in that mechanical room for a couple of days, that's a lot of water that's just lost and wasted. So I think adding some monitoring, adding some data tracking, this is going to help you make better decisions moving forward and it's going to help you save a lot of energy, a lot of water, a lot of money. We also know that electric vehicles are an important part of your plan moving forward. This is a way where you can get the infrastructure paid for and in the ground, ready to go, so that when you're ready to procure the vehicles, you actually have a way to charge them. We also, in addition to using energy savings to pay for these projects, the Energy Office lets us use maintenance and operational savings as well as new streams of revenue in order to pad the cash flow. So we've been able to factor in things like, okay, well, electric vehicles don't need oil changes. How much should we spend on oil changes for our public works trucks every year? That's a real hard cost that we can use to help pay for some of these other scope items that you see here. Just to give you some ideas for what could be possible in a project like this. It's certainly not exhaustive. But these were the, the big five categories that we felt made a lot of sense and certainly will pay for themselves. So what does this look like on a financial level? Lot of information here, so I'll walk through it step by step. So just based on what we found on the previous screen and some feedback that we got from the city, we think there's about $6 million in improvements that could be done that will pay for themselves in that 20-year timeframe. That is a very conservative number. I think personally, it could go north of $10 million. So what, what a cool way to tell your community, hey, we're doing $10 million of improvements and it's not going to cost you anything. Obviously, there's a lot of number crunching that has to be done, but we're pretty confident there's at least $6 million worth of improvements that could be made. Just for context, Schneider Electric, our average project size is about 7.4 million dollars nationwide. So you're right in the sweet spot. This is our bread and butter. This is something that we get excited about. So it's not too big, it's not too small. It's, it's really the perfect project size. And this is just phase one. We might even uncover some other needs and opportunities as we get into that design, engineering, you know, nitty gritty audit that present themselves and we could do that as a, a second phase of work. So what we found from the utility analysis was about $200,000 in annual savings from electric, gas, water, maintenance and operations, even things like your telecom contract. We talked to staff during the vision planning workshop about desk phones. And a lot of people can't even remember the last time they used their desk phone. So let's do away with that, renegotiate the contract, save that money on the telecom and put it to work somewhere else where it's going to benefit everybody. So that's where that $200,000 came from. So if you multiply $200,000 by 20 years, that's about $4 million, but we also take into account inflation, utility escalations. We know our utility costs are rising every single year. So if we can avoid a big chunk of that, that's where that additional life cycle savings comes into play. Ranks and rebates, we already talked about that. I think $50,000 is pretty conservative for a grant that could be applied for this. Schneider Electric has received about $60 million in grant awards on behalf of our clients since October of 2022, since the Inflation Reduction Act first came into play. So we've got a really great team. You also have a great team. We can put our heads together. I think we'll be able to get some amazing grants, especially with some of the disadvantaged areas that you have within your jurisdiction. If we can focus on how it makes a positive impact on those areas, we have an even better chance of getting some grant dollars. So overall, I think total impact could be about seven and a half million dollars. That means there's over a million dollars of positive cash flow that could come out of this. That goes right back in your operating budget for whatever else you want. We're not going to dictate where that money goes, how you use it. That is yours to do whatever you would like with. So there's a lot of benefits to doing the project that go well beyond, you know, energy efficiency. And, you know, the Schneider team, we're all really excited about the possibilities. I think that there's a lot that we can uncover. So we'll talk about some next steps, Jenna?
Yeah, you can stay there.
Okay, so of course we'll open it up to any questions that you all have, but assuming council does not have any objections when we're done here this evening, our next step would be to enter into a sole source energy performance contract with Schneider Electric. Now, once we entered into that contract, city council would of course have the opportunity to review, approve, comment on every contract for every proposed project that would be done under energy performance contracting. So we will be back before you multiple times in the future. On tonight, we're just looking for the direction to move forward with that contract to get this whole process started. And if you have questions for myself, for Schneider or Jim, we're happy to answer them for you.
Councilmember Douglas, what's the upfront cost initially?
So upfront, I will say it, it's a little bit longer answer than just yes or no. The, the cost of the investment grade audit, there is a cost per square foot that's set by the Colorado Energy Office in order to keep that investment grade audit at a manageable amount. So it'd be about $78,000. But again, you don't owe us a check the moment we sign the investment grade audit. Typically, that gets wrapped into construction financing. And so usually you, you don't even make your first payment for that eventual loan that will be taken out until construction is completed. So it could be two years before you even see your first bill. And by then you'll know exactly how much everything costs, how it's going to be paying for itself. But in the event we do the investment grade audit, we find a viable project and you decide not to move forward, then you would at that point owe the $78,000 to Schneider for our engineering costs for that period. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So do we have, I guess this is for staff, do we have that money built into the budget?
So we would go to understand fund balance to appropriate that if this was a direction that you all wanted to move forward with. We have enough in unassigned fund balance, 175, 78,000. So that's not a concern with us.
And you're saying that it's not going to cost us anything, but we would still have to come up with money.
So what they're saying is that if we
Confused on these words.
Just as I think from our process, we would appropriate $78,000 either through a new appropriation mid-year for 2024, depending on the time of execution, or as part of the 2025 actual budget year. It just depends on when that would be executed. That would be held in advance just in case something came up that could take you down the path of it. We would have to come up. But what they're saying is that if we continue through implementation, they're going to ultimately wrap that into their construction financing loans, which we will not actually pay. So that 78,000 is a, a set aside in the event.
So you take out a construction loan to pay for what you're doing here. And how do you all get paid back?
Always a great question. So how do we get paid? So the city would take out a tax exempt lease purchase, which is the type of loan that a lot of banks will finance for EPC projects. And then essentially we get paid upfront from that loan for the cost of doing the construction for you. And then you hold the loan, you have an annual repayment. Just for easy math, let's say your annual loan repayment is $100,000. But we are, we found $105,000 worth of annual utility and operational savings. So essentially you should come out $5,000 ahead at the end of that year. And again, we're guaranteeing that you're going to save more than your loan repayment amount.
So we're taking what we're saving, what we're paying it to you?
You're paying it to the bank.
What we're paying somebody.
Yes. You're paying the bank, the bank pays us.
We're spending money to save money. Yeah. Is that right? Okay. So when do we see the benefit of spending money to save?
So you're, you're already paying for all your utility bills, right? You're paying a million dollars or whatever it is for already.
I'm all for saving energy in any way possible.
And then you take that, that portion that you're saving at that time, like that slide showed, and you're putting that towards paying off the construction costs.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So when, when would we see the actual savings savings? Because we still have to pay that, that loan, even though we're saving it. We still have to, we have to take that money that we were saving, we have to pay you.
Right. So you should see, we can even see cost savings during the construction period. So even before we're done doing all of the improvements, let's say we start with a lighting retrofit. Lighting has a very fast payback. So you can probably see some savings when we get the lighting done and then we'll move on to the heating and air conditioning and the electric vehicles and what have you. Oftentimes the bank will like do either level payments or they structure the payment such that you're never in the red. Obviously, you're going to be a little bit front loaded when you start the loan. But the bank can work it out however is needed to satisfy your finance department.
So when do we start seeing savings savings? Where, where?
When construction, the day that construction is completed.
But I mean, where we don't have to pay you back.
Oh, as soon as the loan is repaid, then oftentimes, and here, let me go back to
Sorry, I'm asking.
No, that's, I'm glad you're asking questions. I know this is a very different way of doing business, so I just want to make sure everybody is understanding. Yep. So, so the construction period is in that identified savings portion right there on number two. And then during the financing period, so let's say you finance for 20 years. That's column three. And then once your 20 years is done, you've repaid your loan, you've repaid the cost of construction, but a lot of the equipment or systems that we have put into the buildings, they're still saving you money. They might not need, need to be replaced until you're 25 or 30. So then all of those savings, the cost of your loan repayment that you had been paying for the last 20 years, now that just becomes extra cash in your operating budget.
Yeah, that, that won't happen for like 25 years, 20 years.
Potentially 20 years. There, there are banks that offer 15-year loans, but keep in mind we use the savings extrapolated over the course of the loan. So let's say for easy math, we're going to save $1,000 a year on energy if we do the project. If we do a 15-year loan, that means we have $15,000 to work with. Thousand dollars a year times 15 years.
Get it, I'm
Yeah.
I'm real true. So I know 15-year loan, 10-year loan.
So the longer the loan, the more money you have to work with upfront.
If I can interject, I think one of the tangible savings measures is during the course of that 20 years, light bulbs that would have been burning out have already been replaced. Equipment that would have been failing is new equipment now. So it's not just the utility savings, but it's the cost avoidance for the ongoing maintenance that doesn't need to be done during that period due to the, the new equipment that's replaced, the stuff that's been identified as a good candidate for replacement as it ages out.
And, and HVAC, is that going to be electrified or would that still be gas powered?
Great question. It is whatever we're directed to do by the city. There's a lot of grant money for electrification. If that's the direction you would like to go, we can certainly take that into account. Our energy engineers would also take into account, okay, if we're taking it off gas, but putting it on electric, obviously your electric bill is going to go up a little bit. We need to make sure financially this is offsetting. And if it's not, then maybe we need to go find some other lighting projects that will help pay for it and insulate things financially. So
Do, do a solar project that would so we could produce our own electricity to power the, the electric heating and cooling system.
Exactly. When you bundle everything together, it all, the longer payback items get insulated by the more low hanging fruit.
Thank you. Councilmember Douglas asked some of the questions that I was wondering about as well. However, it would seem to me that the city staff has spent a year working on this project. So you would have figured out the benefits financially that we can't see because we don't have that in front of us. We don't have those numbers in front of us. So it would be important to know that the city staff is confident about this. It certainly is something that, that I think we would all agree that we would love to be seen as doing an energy initiative in Commerce City. That would be a great example to be setting. That's true. It would be good to be using. It would be good to be using some of the energy alternatives that uh Councilmember Douglas is talking about. I mean, you're going to save on electric vehicles, but first you have to buy them. So that's gonna cost some money also. But I would be glad, you know, we've been asking to have um electric vehicles in our pool for a few years now. So what does the staff, what do you, what do you have to say about the staff's commitment to this and full understanding of the costs of it?
Yeah, definitely. Uh just to answer your first question, we do have a utility analysis, so it's in your appendix. So it lays out all of the various facilities from Bison Bridge Rec Center down to Civic Center. So you'll find, like Bison Bridge, it talks about the area square footage and it's in your attachments. And your annual baseline cost is a hundred and ninety five thousand. Uh savings for potential EPC is about twenty seven thousand two hundred dollars. So across all of the various facilities and potential improvements on an annual basis, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty eight thousand three hundred dollars in savings. And that is a most conservative estimate. Um I will share with you when first engaged um with this opportunity, very different way of local government doing business, particularly around renewable energy sustainability. Um but we have a lot of aging infrastructure, particularly, you know, we we've talked about Paradise Island and this building is two thousand and seven and there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to this building. Um Paradise Island, we talked about four billion dollars worth of improvements. Uh because we have multiple leaks. Think about all of the water that we've lost because of those leaks and we're finding these leaks because we've gone through a different level of testing and we've, even in my time here in Paradise Island, it's always been a problem um with issues. So to us, it it we had to really reshape our thinking and how to approach some of the more traditional issues, but also trying to think about the changing environment around renewable energy and and sustainability. And how can we leverage, knowing there's gonna, obviously there's some risk because we we still have to pay off a bank, we have to pay somebody off. But the cost savings over time and being a role model, uh the right, the intrinsic value of being a role model for the businesses that we wanna recruit and that we want to also convert here. You gotta speak, you gotta step up and and be about it. Um so part of that was the quantitative shows benefit over the long term, right? It's not gonna be overnight. Understand that. But the intrinsic value is being able to go to the business, being able to recruit those and being able to speak to what we're doing. Uh that kinda helps to look at that changing image and also being able to run a resource to our community.
That shows the uh natural gas numbers and
Electricity.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. Um a hundred and twenty eight thousand or so would be, is that the annual savings?
Annual. Pardon me? Annual savings.
Okay, but we don't have that for the other items. So just comparing numbers, we don't have a number comparison, but that's why I'm saying if you're confident it's going to help, then I can be confident too. I do like the idea of the of the um us taking this, taking the lead on this. Um and when you say that you have a grant uh office at Schneider Electric, um is that free assistance or is that also a cost?
There's no additional cost for that. That is a service that we offer to all of our clients. And that is assistance in identifying grants that could work and also writing it.
Great. Okay, that would be, that's really great news because you have a lot of grant funding opportunities listed here and that would be really terrific. So sounds good to me because I'm trusting this the research.
Councilmember Derek? Yeah, I think that's most of my question. This is mostly um about the loan. Is that something that Snyder um assists in getting structured?
That's a great question. So Schneider Electric is not a municipal finance advisor. I will put that caveat out there. We can help you develop a solicitation for a proposal with some guidelines on, you know, whatever terms you would like to see. And obviously we have relationships with banks because we've done four billion dollars worth of these projects over the years. So we we can assist you in choosing some banks we think would be interested in financing this. We will give you the tools you need to write that solicitation. But we are hands off. We cannot tell you which bank to use because of dot rank, so.
Yeah, I'm supportive. I think uh you know, as long as staff has the the guidance that they need to on the loan piece and how we can repay those back and when when.
The city does have a new advisor.
I'd just like to add, you know, I've used the EPCs at a few different cities and they've always outperformed. And one of the contracts was with Schneider. But they've just been amazing in my experience.
That's important.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. One is is this an all in type deal or when you come back and you said there would be an opportunity, this council, are you seeing it on on different stages to be able to determine oh, we're, let's do this rec center, this rec center and the city hall. Um maybe we're not gonna do the the park transitional lighting at this time. Maybe we're not gonna do something else and pick and choose. How does that affect that seventy eight thousand dollars?
That doesn't affect the seventy eight thousand whatsoever.
It'll affect the bottom line and the payment, right?
So there are milestone meetings that the Energy Office requires us to hold throughout the investment grade audit, which is the next phase we would potentially enter into. So there's a thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, and that's how much development we've done. It is a very collaborative process. So we would work with uh Jim's team, with Jeff's team and Public Works. We're never going to push a certain type of equipment or manufacturer that doesn't fit what the maintenance and public works staff's needs are. So there's very much a back and forth on what works for you. And sometimes things do fall off of the list because after we crunch the numbers, it's not as financially advantageous as we would have hoped. So we give you, we give you the opportunity to say, is that something that you wanna leap off the list because it's going to negatively affect our cash flow or do you wanna try to make it up somewhere else?
Kinda where my thought was not that I'm against doing any of it. It is um can you phase some of this? Can we do, can we as a council decide, hey, you know what? Let's go with our two biggest buildings, Public Works and and City Hall and get solar and get get these ramped up. Um so that we're not all of our eggs in the basket at one time, make sure that that we're comfortable um that you know, I I I really hate playing with, you know, ten million dollars of our taxpayers' money and go, well, you know, we were told the results were gonna be good, but you know, I I didn't know if we could, you know, realistically phase it and say, let's do some of our bigger buildings. Let's let's do the vehicle chargers. But um you know, one of the ones that that hit me while you were talking about it is we're planning construction for a police stop station. And my guess is that trying to implement some of these practices on the front end is a lot better than trying to retrofit some of these buildings and has that that particular project even been in discussion as part of uh the development of the plans that you've already started to identify.
I would say not that in particular, but these are the kind of conversations that we'll have early and often in the process. We'll like take a look at your capital improvement plan, for example. You know, is there anything slotted for replacement in the next year? That you've already got funds appropriated for that maybe we could take off that list and move it to this bucket.
Kinda where I was going is, you know, we have some retrofitting to do on our existing buildings, but we also have a lot of parks in our plans for development of of new parks, things of that nature. Um you know, we talk about the the water savings. Um one of the things that is is tough is we we don't operate, own and operate the water department side of the the facilities that go into the savings. Um I I was kinda shocked, was at a meeting not too long ago, um and Water District gave a presentation and the number one biggest user of water, private user of water in our city. Um and I would I would challenge anybody in this room unless they were at that presentation to tell me who the number one biggest private user of water is in the city. Um it is the Reunion Metro District. And it's because they um constantly are filling the lake to keep it full and static. So it is the number one biggest water use. It would be nice if we could have some ideas, and I'm I'm leaning on you because this is kinda what you guys do, of trying to um reline the lake, keep it from leaking as fast, try to preserve some of our resources for future growth of this community. Um and it is just a thought because that kinda shocked. But um I would I would like to 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 see all of it, all the pieces and how this could help us future development of our uh facilities um that we have already in the planning. And uh then retrofitting of the other facilities and have some choices of what you know, how how deep we wanna go into it and and if there's ways to do it in stages so that uh I I feel a little more comfortable than throwing all of it at one time.
I totally understand that, especially because this is a very new and different concept.
As long as those options are available, to me, that's important.
They are. And in fact, I would say probably seventy percent of our projects end up being phased work that we we do in manageable chunks. And sure, you might have to take out multiple loans, but if that's what makes you comfortable and that's what makes sense financially and or in organizationally, we can slice and dice it any way that works for you.
Well, we still have to get buy-in from our constituents. And I think, you know, the 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 big number approach um isn't so easy for a lot of them to swallow at first. So I I I wanted options.
So I would say this is, the reason EPC is so unique is because there's no need for taxpayer vote because this is self-funding.
We're still accountable. I know there's not a vote, but we're still accountable.
Yes, and we'll make sure that everything is communicated to the community about where, okay, we see a lot of backhoes at that park. Who's paying for that? What's happening over there? We can provide you with a communications plan to describe what you're doing, how you're doing it and where that money is coming from. Um so that might be helpful as well.
I think all the pieces um to to have an opportunity to pick and choose all the different pieces to, but the 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 council feels comfortable going to the community with.
You bet.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dukes?
Uh can you can you go back a couple of slides? I think was slide one or two. It had a strategic plan and then you had like a list of things that will be provided, right there, yeah. Um so thanks for the presentation. I think just overall, like echo my council members um in terms of trust in the staff, and it's been a year of that and going through the process, so comfortable on that. A couple of questions I have is around, one was infrastructure. I think that's the question you answered, which is aging infrastructure. Um a comment is around, I think Commerce City is in its unique space where if we do this now, we're not old enough, you know, we're not, we're still new enough or it's actually can make a pretty good impact because we don't have a lot of aging infrastructure as as compared to some other cities. So I think this would be a great time for something, for this opportunity. Um my questions are around uh maintenance. And so like when I think about EV charging stations, every five years they need to be updated, right? Uh or there there's different the coding or the technology changes. And so I'm curious around that. And as as far as electric or solar as well, uh who, technology changes with solar panels? And so who updates the solar panels after four or five years to meet the newest technology so it's it's capturing enough energy on the grid? Um and is that you or is it us or how's that work?
So to address your maintenance question, obviously we don't wanna put any kind of system or piece of equipment in here that will place undue stress and burden on your budget and your maintenance team. So maintenance costs are factored into the cash flow. So in that pay for itself model, we need to make sure if there is an increase in maintenance costs based, you know, compared to what you had before, we need to be able to account for that because that is a hard cost to you. So we can include preventative maintenance in the contract. Um in addition to the construction, if you would like, we can play around with the numbers and see how that falls. If you would like to go find your own third party maintenance provider, and we can factor that into the cash flow kind of outside, we can do that too. But it's something that we're aware of and we'll keep an eye on and you get to dictate how you wanna see that play out.
So will we have to put it into our loan? From here you say we put it into the loan, maintenance is also the big cost when things we need to repair or replace will be part of the loan, right?
It can be, yes.
Okay. Um the other question I have is around workforce. I think the evolution of work, this can help sustainability. Are you having jobs and having ideas around sustainability as a city is a good idea? And with that education outreach, do you do outreach with our community members and our schools and help provide not necessarily jobs right away, but like training on how to um evolve their practices? Is that what you guys do as well?
Yes, so we have a really robust marketing and engagement team. And workforce development is obviously very important to overall economic development, attracting people to wanna move here, live here. So as far as workforce development, we've had programs where we had high schoolers or apprentices, job shadow folks on our job sites, for example. Well, do you wanna talk about the students and STEM program that we did recently? We work with a lot of public school districts as well, so.
That makes sense. I I appreciate that. The other part of that is the adult learners, the upskilling. Are you gonna, do you partner with our local nonprofits that would help like even start businesses or like help understand sustainability? Is that a part of your work as well?
It could be, yes. Really, the sky's the limit. Again, that vision, like the Sierra Vista, Arizona example I gave, they were very unique in their desire to be a sports tourism destination. We figured out how it can happen.
When you say this could be, is that a part of the loan we have to take out for the hours that you support us?
Yes, you can either pay separately or we can include that in the loan. We just need to make sure there's enough utility savings, maintenance savings somewhere else to pay for those services.
Thank you.
But it is an option.
I think it kinda also supports. Um you have in the grant funding opportunities in the appendix miscellaneous EDA Economic Adjustment Assistant Grant and Job Creation and Private Investment, they're alone. So I'm assuming that kind of addresses that aspect of workforce development that we could partner with in collaboration.
Yes, so any grants you would like to apply for, we can obviously give you the assistance for that. That is no additional cost, by the way. So the grant assistance, that's no additional cost. Marketing, branding, PR, there would be a cost associated with that. So if you were to get a grant awarded, then we could help you with the implementation of those grant awards to put new programming in place. Do more construction, whatever, whatever's spelled out in the grant.
I also completely trust the city and I was wondering if there's like an equity priority in those grants because a lot of our community is DIC. Um with that, I'm concerned, this sounds awesome, almost too good to be true because we've been honestly talking about it in so many ways. Um how can we also be aware of gentrification and displacement from those DIC communities while we update a lot of infrastructure? It will bring a lot more, but we're not trying to displace the communities that are there. We're trying to have them partake in the benefits too.
Right. That is a great question. I would say on the community engagement front, um you already have an open contract with Lotus Engineering. They're actually really good partners of ours. And so we often engage with them or other firms like them on the community engagement portion of things to make sure you know, if that's a priority for you, that we take that into consideration as we afford with the project. So you cute, it's your fault.
All right, uh I'm just gonna go real quick because we gotta wrap this up. Uh I appreciate I was excited when I saw this on there because I know about material investment and and what this will do for the city and it um I just didn't see battery storage or micro grids on there because that would really help.
That is a yes, those can be in there, yes. We just haven't looked at it quite yet, but.
Okay, and then when it comes to solar, the only thing you have solar panels.
Okay. And then when it comes to solar, the only thing you have solar panels actually live in the last twenty, twenty-five years. It's the inverters you have to change out in fifteen years. Those cost the most. So, uh, I see this grant funding and all that, which, which is great. And the other project we have is a Buffalo Run golf course. Try to work with them, um, to retrofit, take advantage of thirty percent because that's going to help with cost. So, yeah, so, uh, appreciate you guys being here and, and, uh, going into depth. So it sounds like you got a clear path, Jenna?
Yes, sir. Thank you, council. Appreciate all the comments and we will be back for you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next is Seventy Second Station URA Plan Update.
So, oh, we're going to go to that.
Thank you. So Bill, he's going to let you know, says an hour, you've got forty-five minutes.
He already speaks to us.
I'm confident we can do that. Mayor, Mayor Pro, ten members of Calpol, thank you for having us tonight. Um, as Mayor Douglas said, we're a little short on time, so we're going to go through these a little quickly to get to the questions and direction area. But just as a reminder, the, uh, the market study in the condition survey were both attached as part of this agenda. So at your convenience, you can go through them, reach out to me if any questions you have on them. Do you want to introduce Sarah Dunmire with EPS? They are a consultant on this project. Um, Sarah and her group did the market study and the condition survey or BLIT study for the area we're talking about. So she'll go over those slides, uh, as we get to them. So the overview indicates the different slides we're going to do, but really the purpose tonight is to give city council an update as the governing body for urban renewal areas. So prior to an urban renewal authority taking place, the city council must approve a plan. The city council has the sole discretion to approve or deny or to customize an urban renewal plan. So tonight we'd like to give you an update on where we're at. And then we're going to be seeking direction on the goals and objectives and the plan boundaries specifically to, if it's the council's desire to include residential or not to include residential in the first phase of the urban renewal around the Seventy Second Station. And then also some conversations that city staff has been having with county staff on whether or not to recommend the inclusion of, uh, of county properties or potentially an annexation of some county properties in this area. Um, just very quickly, this is, uh, the, the agreement that the city has with the county, just to be very clear about that, uh, there was in twenty twenty-two, an IGA signed in which the Urban Renewal Authority put up half the contributions to create the plan and the county did. The IGA is simply for a cost share and for, and to dedicate staff to prepare the plan. But I just wanted to note that at the end of the day, decisions related to urban renewal areas, the creation of plans, modifications to plans, rests solely and exclusively with the city council of, of Commerce City. Uh, this really dates back to twenty thirteen. The city of Commerce City with several different organizations did a land use plan in twenty thirteen that was heavily engaged with the community and stakeholders and this area on what their vision and what they wanted to see the redevelopment around Seventy Second Station to be. Uh, generally speaking, that plan, uh, literally in the document said that that plan supersedes the comprehensive plan as far as land use decisions in and around the area. That was called the STAMP. It's the Station Area Master Plan. In twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the city of Commerce City did an update to that. Uh, the TAP, it's a technical advisory panel through the Urban Land Institute. And basically the outcomes of that identified in twenty twenty-one are that this plan should serve to achieve a vibrant transit-oriented development in a community center around the train station. And that the vision was one of pedestrian, bike and automobile connectivity with a diverse housing stock, economic development opportunities, employment and neighborhood serving areas. So say that to say that the city of Commerce City already adopted the land use plan in twenty thirteen, updated it in twenty twenty-one. And in both of those plans, it stated in chapter six, which was the implementation section, that the only relevant or likely source to finance the redevelopment that is necessary in this area and the infrastructure is due urban renewal. So really both those plans indicated that the Urban Renewal Authority would maximize the revitalization activities in the area and provide the financial resources for the redevelopment. So the Urban Renewal Authority is not creating a new land use plan, does not control zoning, does not do annexation. It is a finance tool to implement the city's adopted plan from twenty thirteen that was updated in twenty twenty-one. Uh, these were the efforts in twenty thirteen on the far left of your screen, created a land use plan, identified five pages worth of infrastructure projects that the city needed to be working on in order to encourage revitalization and redevelopment in this area. And then the slides on the right side of the screen here were supplemented in twenty twenty-one with planning studies that indicated where the city should be focused, where densities would go, what transportation projects should be prioritized. But again, in either of these documents, do we indicate that there would be any reasonable funding source outside of urban renewal? Uh, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sarah so Sarah can give you an update on the condition survey that EPS did, the open house that we conducted for the neighborhoods, as well as the market study that we recently did.
Thanks, Bill. Um, so yeah, so this is our progress to date, as Bill said. So we unified all property owners within the study area. So in the county and Commerce City of the existing condition survey to be conducted. Um, and then we also conducted the existing condition survey, which I'm going to give a high level overview, um, today as well. And then there's more details in the report in the packet. We also connected an open house back in September with about fifty participants and that was connected to the firehouse in the study area. Um, and so we got a lot of feedback, heard from community members there of what kind of issues, um, concerns they had, as well as what they like to see happen within the study area. And then we also connected, um, a market study, um, just to estimate demand for development within the study area, um, and identify different opportunity sites for transit oriented development based on the stamp, um, previous plans. So, um, this is from the state legislator. So there's our, our eleven factors of light conditions. Um, so not a great word, but, um, basically we did an existing condition survey where we drove and walked around the entirety of the study area to identify if these factors exist. Um, so we found eight of the eleven factors. And I would just note that four, um, factors are only required if it's multiple property owners. So we found double that. We look for as many, um, kind of findings and conditions and observations as possible to just build credibility for establishing a new urban renewal plan area. Um, I'd also say in the past couple of years with the studies I've done for new plant areas, the most we typically see is eight or nine, and that's kind of rare. Um, most often it's closer to like four, maybe six. So I would say we definitely have those, um, conditions to support a new plan area in, um, this study area. So I'll go through quickly, um, some of the evidence that we found, and there's more detail then in, um, the reports. But basically for street layout, um, we're seeing potholes, lack of pavement on different streets, and then inadequate access for emergency vehicles. So specifically the top photo is across the train tracks to, um, the Fri property just west of the Seventy Second Avenue Station. And then also, um, along Sixty Fourth Avenue with, um, a dirt road and bridge on that southern portion of the study area. We also have core provisions for pedestrians with lack of sidewalk network, um, and sidewalks that abruptly stop. And in the next slide, we have a map showing all, um, kind of the disconnected, um, connectivity within the study area where there's, um, missing sidewalks on either one or both sides of the street. So some of the major corridors and arterials are listed here with Brighton Boulevard and Seventy Second Avenue as two of the big ones. Um, and then the next condition is lot layout. So with this, we look at, uh, parcels that have inadequate access um, or sized that would impede development. Um, so we have a map here showing that these parcels that have, um, don't have direct access to a roadway. So they either need approved access points or, um, needs to be aggregated with other parcels or de-aisment to have that access so that way development can occur. And the next slide, um, on safer, unsanitary conditions, we found excessive litter throughout the study area. Some photos here as well as cracker on even surfaces, um, for pedestrians and then bad vandalism and graffiti as well. And for site improvements, so, um, a lot of deteriorated fences, signage with stops on the ground, and just some general neglected properties where you can see that there's maintenance deficiencies, um, and just lack of care. And then some deteriorated onsite parking surfaces and pavement as well. And then for lack of infrastructure, um, we have lack of pavement, curb, sidewalk and drainage in different areas of the study area, as well as presence of overhead utilities and overgrown vegetation. Although I will note, we did this study, um, in March last year, so not the best time to see overgrown vegetation, but, um, we did still have evidence of that. And then we also looked at endangerment. So what parcels are within a, a flood hazard area? So, uh, on the map, that blue area is in the one percent chance, um, of a flood happening each year, um, from FEMA. So those parcels would require additional, um, development requirements to with drainage and things to be out of that flood zone area. And we also looked at environmental contamination. So the bright green, uh, parcels here are current landfills. We also have a superfund site in the blue in that southwest corner of the study area. And then, um, the Fri property just west of the station is a formal, former landfill. So these, um, properties would need probably some level of environmental remediation in order for development to occur or some significant development requirements as well. And then we looked at vacancy as a last finding. So there are about a hundred and eighty-eight vacant parcels, uh, within the study area that do not have any building improvements on them. Those are highlighted on the map in orange. We also, uh, saw buildings, uh, that are vacant with boarded up windows as well as, uh, lease signs for commercial properties with available space for rent. Um, so if that meets that finding of vacancy, that final finding of light. Um, so we've done our thorough research of the study area and it meets everything required in the state statute um, for that existing condition survey. Uh, next we did the market study, which I'm just going to do some high-level findings. Um, there's a lengthy report there if you want to skim, um, and some key findings as well. Um, but basically we looked specifically around the station for opportunities for transit-oriented development. And although the area is largely built out, there are a few key parcels, um, that have opportunity for development. Um, a important thing to note is a lot of these do have some development, um, restrictions and having TIF as a mechanism to help incentivize development and fund public improvements and white rate improvements is really important, um, to help have TOD occur around the station. We did see that there's demand for multifamily development. So since twenty fifteen, the study area as a whole has a very low multifamily vacancy rate of about four percent. Um, about five percent is equilibrium. So that's definitely below that threshold. Also, there's a lot of pent-up demand. So there hasn't been any new multifamily development in the past two decades within the study area. Um, so it just shows that there's more demand, um, for that. I'd like to note that there are the two affordable housing projects, um, near the station with about a hundred and fifty units that are approved. So having those develop will really help, uh, bring in new development to the area as well. And then we did a forecast, uh, for residential households for the area and estimated there's about, um, twenty-nine hundred, uh, households, uh, over the twenty-five year period that we looked at because TIF clock can run for twenty-five years. Um, so we estimate that, um, majority of those will be multifamily units and about fifteen percent would be attached units. And then we looked at industrial development as well. And although there's demand for about one point two million square feet of industrial development, um, majority of that is for Adams County. And that's the more traditional large-scale, uh, distribution warehouse, um, industrial development. While within the stamp area and in Commerce City, it's more of the demand for the small-scale flex light industrial development that would likely occur kind of south of the station, further away from the TOD development. And so we looked at different opportunity sites, as you can see in the map here. So we evaluated seven sites, um, that are currently, uh, have vacancy to see, uh, how they would do for transit-oriented development. Um, so one and two are the parcels that have the affordable housing projects approved. And then, um, site three is a Fri property just west of the station. Um, so that one is currently for sale. Um, it does have some access requirements on it, um, that would definitely impede some development. And it's also not annexed. So it's an unincorporated Adams County. Um, so if it was part of the URA, we would definitely recommend annexation for that. And then parcel, um, four is unlikely for development. That's where the bash plant currently is, which has a long-term lease, unfortunately. So it'd be, I think, twelve or thirteen years before anything would really happen. Um, so that isn't looked at for the immediate future. And then site five is a former Alsom Elementary Site, which has a building demolished. That one is ready for development. And then we also looked at parcel six, uh, which is within the city limits. Um, it is owned by Adams County. It probably has some topographic issues, but there is potential for development there as well. And then parcel seven is a little too far out for TOD, but it is a former RTD park and ride, uh, that is currently vacant that could develop in the future. Uh, but we did include that for part of our analysis. And then there is industrial opportunity sites that are further described in the report, further south from the station, um, within the city. And that would be that light industrial flex space, um, from the market study. So we estimated demand, um, with a, uh, kind of potential development program that could happen immediately around the station. Um, so for this, we're looking at a twenty-five-year timeline, and this is where that household forecast of about twenty-nine hundred households comes in. And then if that's kind of tightly centered around the TOD development, um, we estimate that a max of about seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial retail neighborhood services could be supported, um, based on that household forecast. And then the industrial development, about a hundred and sixty-four thousand of industrial space kind of further away from the station in those areas that already have some outdoor storage or industrial uses on them or near them. Um, so with that, we definitely have the findings of light identified and, um, the demand for the market, um, also with that report. So our next steps, Bill's going to lead the discussion about kind of identifying what this boundary should look like um, based on your direction. And once that's complete, our next steps are to do an urban renewal plan as well as a county and taxing entity impact report. And then negotiate then agree, agreement with each taxing district of what the TIF share should be for the URA. After all of that is established, then we come back, um, for formal approvals, um, from Planning Commission, the URA Board and City Council. So I'll let Bill, um, talk about the rest of the direction we're expecting tonight.
Yeah. And one of the other things I just want to quickly point out here is that, um, while we certainly want to continue moving forward, especially with, while we have a contract with EPS to complete this project, there, we have years to do this. So if we want to study additional lands, if we want to look at other things, I do not want you to feel pressured like you have to make a decision tonight. This is kind of to let you guys know where we're at. Uh, we've had some conversations with the county staff as far as maybe some of the board of county commissioners and maybe some of the expectations that they've relayed to their staff. And just trying to understand if our objectives align and, and what the next steps would be to coordinate the boundary of the plan. Once the boundary of the plan is determined, then we will release EPS to actually do the, uh, URA plan, which will have very specific information on investment in the area, what tools we want to use in the area. And then all of that will have to be approved by city council through a public hearing process where the planning commissioner will hear it, make a recommendation, go to city council for formal approval, and then that will adopt the plan. Um, when we talk about, when we talk about the next steps, um, in direction specifically, I want to go back to this idea that in twenty twenty-two, we signed an IGA with the county and the IGA said that the county would share the cost and they would provide staff to support the development. And the idea being is that there is a significant amount of land in the area that is county land and, and a portion of the city land. And at the time, the idea was, and the county has moved forward at this time with state legislation that would allow counties, the tool to have urban renewal authorities, that has not been approved yet. But the idea of this larger area was if in the future, if the county is successful in that, then the work that we're doing today would be transferable to them to use for a period of years to advance their mission on lands in the unincorporated areas. Um, however, recently there's been some conversations about potentially having unincorporated properties in the city. So we wanted, or, uh, in the URA plan. So I just want to quickly talk about the goals and objectives to see if those have changed since the land use plans were adopted in twenty thirteen, updated in twenty-one to create a walkable, pedestrian-friendly, transit-oriented community around the train station. So if we're thinking that that's still the goal and objective, then we're really not thinking lands that are a mile or a mile and a half from the train station. Not to say that in the future, we couldn't have a second or a third area, but, but really what the state statute says is that you must adopt the most narrowly focused boundary within the goals and objectives of the plan. So as we're thinking from a staff's perspective on what to recommend, we'd like to confirm, is that still the vision of this area to have a TOD-focused development? And then with the planned boundaries, specifically the inclusion of residential properties. So why would you include residential properties? There, there are a lot of organizations in Colorado like Denver and Greeley and Lakewood that have urban renewal authorities that allow the homes in and around those URA areas. to get grant funding for facade improvements or repairs to their homes at low cost or no cost for lower income or moderate income families. That way, a homeowner who lives in the area can get a loan, can, can fix their roof or do improvements to their house at no cost or low cost. The other thing that a lot of communities do is grants for access, you know, allow you to age in place or if you have a disability to do ramps and AD upgrades. So those are things that some urban renewal authorities do with residential properties. It also allows in the future for when public works is ready to go in the neighborhoods and pave roads or do sidewalks or infrastructure projects to use TIF funds to help support that budget so that it's not just general funds. There are a variety of reasons you would do it. Really reasons you wouldn't do it. The first reason is that all the homes are existing. So if, from an urban renewal perspective, you're really focused on the increment, right? The base value is established the day the plan is approved and the increment is the added value through urban renewal. And with the existing homes, you're not going to get much of an increment. So they, they likely would be taking more than they'd be contributing, which is okay in a lot of situations. The other thing is the political will. While, while I can tell you that in our urban renewal authorities history, we have not condemned properties. We have not pushed out families. We have not bought families, bought homes and relocated families. That is something that historically urban renewal authorities have done, that we would have the power to do. So politically, it's, it's, you know, sometimes challenging to go to all the residential properties, which there are over 500 residential properties in the study area and explain that to them that they don't need to worry that we're not going to condemn their homes. So political will is, is something certainly to take into consideration.
And I would just add real quick, sorry, Bill.
No, Bill.
For the eminent domain, you can either include or exclude that in the urban renewal plan. So that could be something that's excluded if you know this plan area doesn't want to ever use that specifically.
And then as far as the inclusion of unincorporated properties, the state statute allows unincorporated properties to be included in a URA. That is really intended to be one offs and or for properties that you expect.
Go ahead, Bill. Thank you.
Go ahead. The, the, the issue with unincorporated properties in an urban renewal area is really several reasons. The first is that in order for unincorporated properties to be in an urban renewal area, that property owner must consent and writing through a form that we'd have to create that they would want to participate in the urban renewal plan. Then that individual would have to go to their bank or mortgage holder or deed holder or lien holder, say they have solar panels on their roof. They'd have to go get that person to sign off. So they'd have to have anyone that has any encumbrance on their property to sign off to consent to let them participate. Then they'd have to go to the board of county commissioners and the board of county commissioners would have to consent for that plan to be part of the urban renewal authority. And it'd have to be contiguous to a municipal property in the URA. So for instance, when you start talking about the unincorporated properties, you really could have one or two holdouts that would destroy the fruit on the vine that you could not get to the rest of the property, similar to annexations and enclaves. So that, that's one issue is the process to get through and who would need that process? How many man hours and or years would that take to go to all those property owners? The second reason is that the county properties don't pay the city sales tax and or the city property tax. But yet as an urban renewal authority, all the funds go into a special fund. So those unincorporated properties would have the same access to those funds to get the dollars out that, that maybe city properties were paying a little bit more into. The very last reason is as a city and as a vision board and as the board that zones property, as a city that controls our own permitting processes. Certainly, if there is a project that we had lined up that was not in the city, we don't necessarily control the zoning or the land use or the vision or the permitting of that property. So it would certainly require some advanced conversations and coordinations or agreements with the county if we were going to include unincorporated properties into the city. So as we get through those slides there, you know, what, what we're looking for tonight is, is general direction on are there any properties that are priorities for the council? As we engage with the neighborhood in a public format, what we heard loud and clear is that the Allsop site is by far the number one target of everyone that we've engaged with. They want to know what the plan for Allsop is. They want to know how it can get developed. So that, that is a priority that we heard from the community. The other property that we heard was a big priority for the community is the 50 acre former landfill that was a rock quarry from the seventies to the nineties. Then it received a permit to backfill the rock quarry with inner materials. We know that there's tremendous cost. We know that access to that property, this one right here west of the train station, is, is very difficult, complex, complicated, expensive, likely will require urban renewal as a tool to help with those costs and the complexity of development. So that's really what we heard from the community was that those two were the top items. Any thoughts on any properties that you have expectations for inclusion?
That's where my dear. Yeah, I was just kind of going to ask about the residential. So because people there, you know, those never have been neglected for one time. And a lot of those people can't afford, you know, some of those basic upkeeps to their home. And, you know, being so close to the refinery, you know, a lot of those homes don't have HVAC, you know, they have heat only. And so being able to find them tools to, you know, make those repairs and implements most changes for themselves, I think would be a good thing to include them on the in the URA. I, I do worry about the eminent domain piece and having developers come in and trying to, you know, buy up existing homes to to rebuild. So I would like to see some protections in the plan for that. But in terms of the, the properties, I think the prime property of the rock quarry is an important one. And like you said, it has limited access. So without the, the URA, I don't see how that's ever going to get developed. You know, I don't know how the annexation will work for that and how receptive they'd be to that. So that's something that we'd have to work through with them. But I do know that they've been trying to sell that property for over a decade. And they haven't been able to because of those access issues that developers won't start looking into it. And it's just not feasible for them to, to build without having that access. Also, the old Adams City High School. So that's something to do also. The parcels that haven't been developed definitely need to be included. I would include the, the rigging property in the corner across the street from New Allsop on 68th. That used to be full service gas station that is now just an open lot for the last 12 years. So I think we need a lot of areas of trying to get as much as possible. It's difficult in that area because there is a lot of county, incorporate Adams County in there and some of those enclaves. So I don't know how.
One of the things, and I appreciate that feedback. One of the, the things that Jason and I have talked about and we've engaged with county staff is the willingness and or desire for city council to have a joint meeting with Adams Board Adams County Commissioners on a potential annexation strategy. There, there is a desire, as we've engaged with the community, there's a desire for the unincorporated properties to be included. But we haven't had much interest in conversations about one off annexations. So it might be an opportunity if city council directs staff to do so, to schedule a joint meeting with Adams Board of County Commissioners to talk about this area more holistically as far as the inclusion of properties in the URA and or if it makes sense for a larger annexation strategy for the, the properties in yellow on the screen below.
Yeah, I think that'd be smart to bring them in. I know several of the commissioners have interest in this area and definitely wanted to make a URA. I don't know how things are moving along with the legislation. But I think it's better to bring them in and that way we're not, you know, barking up the wrong tree. If they're not trying to incorporate or include unincorporated Adams County in the URA, then we can, well, have clearer vision.
Councilmember Ford? I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Madera said. This is a very multi-jurisdictional and I think it goes beyond just the city and the county. I mean, I've talked to Commissioner Odorizil years ago about this. And I know one of his big things is the stuff along the creek, Highway 224. Some of that stuff, I don't know, is though the city would want. And some of it I, I know we wouldn't want. The state does not manage or take care of maintenance on T24 from 85 State Highway 76, which is really a corridor through our community. I, I think that there should be negotiations with the state of Colorado, like we did on Highway two with the county and our mayor or our team to sit down and talk about future of State Highway 224. What, what does, what does it look like? Because in its current state, to, to do an urban renewal and have transportation that is antiquated and, and looks horrible because of lack of maintenance, I think that's a big piece to me. Scott at the ditch company, you know, that has really changed and the cost of bridges are extremely expensive. What, you know, I mean, an initial conversation of what is the ditch company? How, how that, is that going to impact us like on 64th Avenue? If that bridge has to be replaced, which I'm assuming they will require that. I, I also think that we have to consider, if you want to do this right, you have to consider Colorado Boulevard and the storm sewer systems, you know, from, from an upfront infrastructure piece to even get it shovel ready to start getting the urban renewal piece. I'm, I'm curious of the two multifamily developers that are currently developing. How does that play a role? Would they be able to take advantage of some of the TIF or not? Because they're already in the system and already have a plan. I don't know where that falls, those that are partway in and we haven't got an urban renewal. But I think there has to be some serious discussions with the county about what they want, what, what they're going to be able to take and, and what we want to take. I'm with Oscar though. I think the people in that area need to be assured that we're not going to come in and try to take their homes that have been their family homes forever. But still give them opportunity because if we're going to do an urban renewal and create a walking environment around that train station, I think those folks that live in that area should have the opportunity to clean up and improve their properties at a low cost. Like you said, this deciding, the air conditioning, things of that nature to help rise all, you know, one tide raises all ships type of thing. And instead of, instead of pitting people against each other. But you've got multiple jurisdictions that would, the ditch company, the state of Colorado and the county. I think it'll be interesting to see how, yeah, we, we can put together a partnership between all of those entities and make it work. But I see it being a very long term type of deal. I mean, we stepped into some, some urban renewal stuff, but nothing of this magnitude.
And I will tell you, we have met with the fire department. We've met with South Adams County Water Sanitation. We had fantastic conversations internally with the departments that would be responsible for investigating the, the current condition of infrastructure. As, as many of you know, this area was widely developed around World War II and not a whole lot of investment or development has occurred since then. So there's, there, there is a lack of infrastructure. Road, as Sarah's presentation indicated, curbs and gutters, stormwater runoff, inadequate sewer water. So we've been, we've, we've asked the question and what we've heard back is once we kind of identify the boundary, those conversations, those assessments could take up to nine months to, to kind of understand what's existing out there. So again, this is not a rush to get something immediate. It's an update and, and what we found as far as the condition survey indicated that there are more than, than an adequate amount or a minimum amount of what's required to move forward. We've done a market study that indicated the amount of residential and retail and other land uses that we would expect to be absorbed over 25 year period here. Those are the first couple of steps to get moving. Once we get direction on the boundary is when really, you know, we'll need several months to investigate what that really means and what those expenses are before we can recommend adoption of a plan. So there, there's still a lot of time until we get to that point, certainly.
I just was looking, looking at the map and the amount of water that's on that map. There's, there's other, other entities that are going to be owners in, in some of, in some of that property and how does that play a role, whether it's City Thornton Water Supplies or, or who, who knows who a water owners are and how that would play a role. But the ditch company is going to be critical because I know there's going to be at least one ditch crossing, if not multiple. And those, those bridges, we just did the one on, what was it? 112th?
112th in Poria?
Yeah, 112th. No, it's the one right, not that, just down from Bison Ridge. Highway two behind the little sod.
Potomac Street.
Potomac Street. Yeah, that's where it is. But they're not cheap. And so, you know, what's the partnership there? Who does that, who does that improve access for? Is that something that Adams County is going to get improved access and is that something we partner on? They share some of those costs. There's a lot of questions that I have. And, and so really, I guess for me on how big the area is going to be and what it encompasses, I think it's a lot going to have to do with some upfront on the staff's end and working with the county of what their needs are. So that we can, we can see our needs and their needs and merge them. But you can have the railroads to deal with, the ditches to deal with. There's a lot of entities that, this is going to be a complicated one. I'm willing to do it. I think it'll benefit the residents that are in that area. But I think it also should come with an opportunity if they're being upgraded that they can voluntarily, voluntarily annex into Commerce City. Because some of those residents, I see it all the time. You know, they, they're complaining about the trash services and things like that and they're not in the, they're not in the city. They're in the county. And provide them with some of those services or at least have a a sheet that shows the benefits of being in the city versus being in the county for services. And give them some options and make it, make it very low cost for them to be able to annex voluntarily. And I think you make, you make more positive means by, by stepping into it that way. Instead of having them think you're going to try to take them over.
And just in full disclosure, so the, the area in yellow on the screen there, there are a total of 324 county properties in that study area. And of those 304 are single family residential properties. And the idea of going door to door to each of those is incredibly time consuming, which is why we think it might be a good idea to engage with the county to understand if that's the direction that both the city and the county want, what county resources are going and or is there a conversation to consider this potentially one of those enclaves that we've identified in the conference of plan, which is a priority annexation area to bring those in. But of course, then we, we need time as a city, if that is the direction, to understand what our costs will be. Because when you're annexing in properties that were
money off residential.
Especially properties that were developed in the 1950s, 1960s.
And that's why we'd have to have an agreement with the county. I would have to have some kind of a mass overlay that says this is what we're going to do for all the residents if they want to voluntarily annex. If you don't want to voluntary annex, you know, I don't want to go in there because as soon as you start saying, you know, we're going to, we're going to annex the into the city, then they're not going to want to because they don't want their taxes to go up. They don't want this. We need something that shows what are the benefits of being in the city? What are the services that you're going to benefit from being in the city? You know, we have to want them to do it. But we have to walk softly because those flagpole districts have been a challenge. The residents don't want to be in the city, but they'd like to have the services. We've got to balance that out and that's going to take partnership with the county. This is a, a, going to be a long plan. It's not going to happen any morning. Councilmember Teeter?
On that, getting them into the city, I, I believe that just the trash pickup kind of levels out the taxes and they basically break even.
Downside is rock. They don't want to comply with our code, code by, yep. So a lot of them are in call by license. They don't want to comply and it costs more if they have to comply.
Right. And, and we're going to be dealing with the county though. Now's the time to do it while we have the commissioners that's in office now. Because I usually believe that Vasco for sure is one that really cares about this area. And I think he could work with. But I had some concerns about that superfund site. Is it in the county or is it the city?
It's in the county.
And what stage is it at? Is it cleaned up or?
I don't believe so. I believe it's an existing superfund.
And so is it going to have to turn into a Brownsville side or?
I think that one might currently be one of the gravel. I think that one might currently be one of the gravel ponds.
What was it that created the uh?
Right.
Superfund site? That's what I'd like to know, is it an old refinery?
Hold on, hold on, got Councilmember Teeter over here.
I'm, I agree with that question. You know. What's it cost from? I don't know many businesses over in that area in my time.
In in full disclosure, that is a property that is not currently in our growth boundary. It is not, um, we we as staff do not believe that that property plays into the TOD strategy. It is on the west side of the South Platte River.
So actually, it's not in our existing growth boundary, but it is in the proposed comprehensive plan updates growth boundary that you all have not adopted yet, that would expand and take this area out to twenty five. So just.
Well, the area?
Yes.
Oh, it's on the south side of two seventy?
These south side of two seventy, uh, along seventy six out to twenty five and then down.
So a little bridge on sixty fourth and then?
Yes, sir.
So Councilmember Ford, do you need a clarification or anyone to clarify something? Councilmember Teeter, you done?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Douglas, I just want to address for um, the use of our fund.
So I remember going to the meetings when they first proposed a train station. What the citizens wanted and what they thought they were going to get is a far cry from what's going in there now. A big apartment complex. There are so many challenges over there with all the truck traffic. So we've got all that industrial to the south end of it. We have our residents who are heavily and negatively impacted by all of that. We've got Suncor that they pass their exceedances all the time and they're self monitored. So God only knows what's really going on over there. We've got a lot of superfund sites that are going to have to be remanated. We have uh, state highways that are going through there. We've got lots of truck traffic that goes through there and goes through, goes through schools on on a regular basis without, you know, because they want to hurry up and get on on uh, six and eighty five. There are so many challenges and when you, I mean, I know you did an open house and I'm sorry that I missed it. So I have no idea who the residents were, who showed up. But I I've got a lot of people wondering what is going on there? Why they didn't have an opportunity to have a public hearing to to voice their opinions on what was going on? We've got an apartment going up in a parking lot. Looks like there's barely enough room to have it fit on there. So this has been an area that it's been like a mismatch of whoever wanted to do whatever they wanted to do were allowed to do because they wanted to and then whoever they knew to let it happen, it happened. We can't continue on like this. We owe the people who live in that area more than just more challenges and not well thought out at all. Just because a in urban, whatever the Urban Land Institute or whatever this company is, whether it's profit, nonprofit, or whatever, they come in and they have these lofty ideas of what could be there. They don't know the community. They don't know the people in the community. Therefore, how could they make decisions on what should be there? If 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 all they're doing is what they know how to do without really drilling down and figuring out what's going on there over there and what would be the real solution? I I I wouldn't want to raise a family over there because if I had little kids, I'd be worried about the 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 truck traffic all the time. Uh, there's this, I I, I don't know. So.
If if I'm American, the developments that are underway are separate apart from what what Bill is talking about.
Yes, I understand that, but it still impacts the community.
I I get that, absolutely. I I guess where where we end up for tonight. We've gone through the technical steps to identify light study, condition survey, issues in in quite frankly, various challenges that still need to be discussed, that still need to be addressed. But I wouldn't say that we're at any stage outside of, do you all want us to continue advancing with next steps, which looks at all of these different various challenges that you've raised tonight, even that we've been talking about in turn, right? Development without displacement, infrastructure challenges, superfund challenges, which are environmental constraints and concerns. But in that, we think it's, we think it's prudent that you all have a conversation with your counterparts at the county so that you all have joint expectations. Because whether or not somebody annexes in, annexes this in or not, they are still going from an interface of city to county, back to city, back to county. And it'd be nice to understand how we're all working off the same sheet of music. And I think that's where we're at today. All of the other questions about boundary and inclusions, we still have to work through that, whether it's through additional public engagement as it is with you all here around this table, but also with you all around the table and the county. So I guess my request, just kind of bringing this full circle, is do we continue to keep working down this path of getting you with the county commissioners and talking about these challenges that you outlined about bo- boundary inclusion? So that that way, we can hit it at the head right then and there, as opposed to kind of going around from meeting to meeting, trying to get there.
Well, I would say based on time, I know there's, we have more councilmen who want to talk about this. This is really important. And so we either can put this on the another study session to continue this talk. That way we'll allow more dialogue and more time because there's no way. I have Councilmember Dukes, Mayor Paul Tam, Councilmember Chacon, myself. I could take another forty five minutes, a half hour because.
I'll be ready.
Okay, hold on. So we can, we can either take, push another, another study session so we can continue this robust, this robust conversation and go on to the next one. But still have to, we still have two more and it's ten o'clock and we adjourn to ten thirty, right?
We adjourn at ten thirty unless you, unless you extend.
No voting.
That's true. It's at ten thirty.
Well, I'd say you could. Whenever you guys want. I'm going to do that.
I just um.
I didn't hear that, so I was just.
In this particular case, it sounds super clear.
Yeah, right.
They short timer syndrome.
So the I I think, I think we, I think we gave you a lot of information on on a very important topic that obviously it's still a session. You know, we don't want to rush, but obviously we know that there, I'm just going to say, we know that there's a desire in the county to keep moving this forward. But we want to make sure that we're hitting all of the important aspects to address the challenges and the concerns and quite frankly, the development perceptions that exist out there. So we want to at least have an opening conversation with you. You all comfortable having this on another agenda and willing to, you know, help us make sure that we can go back to our counterparts at the county and say, hey, give us more time so that we can get to a a level of comfort with our council to make sure what's being presented, information and robust discussion so that we can come back around the table. We probably are looking at uh, Q two for that conversation.
Yeah, without taking a vote, just say, hold on, without taking a vote, would would the council like to continue us to another study session?
It's too important to throw up. I've been asking for sidewalks here.
Well, no, I'm not saying, hold on, hold on here, no, we're not, we're not going to continue this. Ask this, Councilmember McDermott, I had to, I had to ask Councilmember Dukes wanted to ask a question, so please don't jump in. Because he had something he wanted to say, I'm asking everybody to hold off and so I want, I want councils. Well, sir, if you like to continue and go outside, when we continue, I mean, you can. I'm trying to make sure we continue this on another night. If you wish not to discuss this, you you, you have no problem, you want to go home because you have time, okay? What we have is ten oh five right now and I want to discuss this too. I'm just asking if we can continue this to another night or study session. I want council's consent because we can't vote. That's okay, give him, give him counsel, give the staff direction to push us to another study session. Do I have some?
Are you asking that question?
Yes.
To not have the rest of us ask our questions and save them? Okay, I would, I would, I need clarity tonight.
Okay, well then, then we're going to go till ten thirty then. So Council, uh, Councilmember Dukes, were you done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Councilmember Dukes.
Um, just briefly, I think this is an important issue and I love to um, like keep moving forward with it, with it this night. And so I'll be brief, as far as annexation, I think it's a great idea. They have the commissioners and us talk through an annexation plan and what that looks like is the, for the citizens or for the residents to be able to go back and forth. We're on the same page. As far as um, including residential, I think that's a great idea in terms of having um, opportunities to improve infrastructure. Also, opportunities for them to update their housing as needed with grants and availability. That would actually help offset the idea of displacement, which um, TOD projects often do, right? Um, as far as Adams City High School, um, I love the idea of adding Adams City High School to the, to the plan um, for the reasons we talked about in sense of like, this is an entryway into our city. And right now that that vacant land, it just, it doesn't look like um, the the community we want. So having something there on the way up, the highway will be uh, amazing. Last, just making sure we have language by eminent domain and that we also communicate that to our community. Like, here's the language, I don't know how we do a screenshot or really share like the contract, here's eminent domain, we're not asking U R A to go in. Uh, the last piece is that the, this is going to be multiple conversations as you go through the process of planning and a public hearing. Um, but even thinking through some of the challenges of the superfund site, the connectivity to water influence U R A funding to like, no one else is touching that, right? Um, so this is a great opportunity to really use U R A as a way to say, how do we help with the community to improve the rate?
Thank you, I just had a question for clarity and also Mayor Douglas, I do think that we should have this conversation at another study session as well. Because it is huge and I don't feel that we're prepared to sit down with the county commissioners and say, and have a conversation. We're not prepared to do that from what I've heard. Bill, is the area in yellow is county property?
No, and the area in yellow is the stamp plan, the area in.
Wait, say that again?
The stamp, the stationary master plan.
And what is the county area?
The uh, the county area are the ones, it's difficult to see from this map, but they're the ones that are not clouded. So these ones that have a a tint over them are city properties. It's very difficult to see on this map.
It's hard to see. It's hard to see on my screen also. It would be helpful to have um, like a main thoroughfare that's obvious on the map, like seventy second, just just to be able to place it. And I know that up there by the ponds, that's all Thornton. So now we wind up with one of our uh, strange um, boundaries again. If that's, if that's how you want to do it. And it looks to me from looking at Google Maps, um, they have all of the industry and and there's just other stuff in that little sliver that peninsula is sticking up there. I don't know if that boundary makes sense. And Mr. Frye told me um, that the Suncor pipeline runs on his um, eastern edge of his property and that is what has stopped development. That's a huge monster pipeline for Suncor carrying their crude.
I think that's in the railroad railway.
It is in the railroad railway, the.
He told me it's a pipeline for.
The crude, yeah.
It is, it is. One of the other things that we found out is that um, any true um, TOD development, there needs two points of access, which means you have to go over the tracks, you cannot go under just because of the water tables you see um, with the city and county endeavors um, uh, reservoir to the south of it. So we've actually submitted a grant uh, to the F R A because it's not the F T A, that's a very different aspect. F T A, because it's, it's not a commuter, since it's a commuter rail, it has to go to the Railroad Association versus the Transit Authority, which has different requirements for design. So that is an expensive effort of just going through the design practice of that. So we've actually submitted a grant into Popser with R T D to get grant funding to be able to design those two crossings over onto that property. Um, the other issue is brand sand and gravel. They've got a thirty seven year lease. Um, and they have a significantly high valuation on the, on that lease uh, and that conditional use permit is one of those kind of golden unicorns you don't find in the world today. So they don't want to give that up either, unless they are getting something of equal value somewhere else, Commerce City or the county. Just sharing with you full, for full disclosure, what's been discussed with us. So some of these things that we've talked about tonight, obviously are best handled in other discussions. Um, because these are all the various challenges that need to be identified and need to be addressed and need to have a targeted strategy of how to actually implement and deploy. But just that's some additional feedback for you all when we're thinking about that particular area to that. Because if not, what is easy to develop their far warehouses? Low threshold of of staffing, individuals don't require the same level of access, but it also doesn't maximize the use of the light rail station. It doesn't support the community in which it would be located within.
R T D put the train station without thought to what was surrounding it. They found um, an access point and they just put it through. There is no uh, rhyme or reason really to any of the light rail. I I take light rail all over the place and the track, the line track and I mean, there's no rhyme or reason to it other than it was available land and poof, there they go. So that's why it's there. The fact that it would make wonderful TOD development never entered their mind. They don't know, they they didn't think about what the uh, obstacles were to developing the area, they just plopped it down there. You know, we could not make it housing and that would be a whole different story. That's what the residents said that they wanted during the comp plan. When I was on uh, webinar calls, when they, the residents said they wanted entertainment there, they wanted a performing arts center there. They wanted everything but housing in the area. And finally, I'm, I'm actually saddened to see that um, all of that within the yellow area does belong to us and we let it um, we let it deteriorate. Um, that's, that's on, that's on us, it's not on them. There are other cities like Thornton pays residents to meet code. They actually give them the money for what it's going to require to meet the code. So um, there's things that we could, could have done. But as I say, I think this is a much longer conversation and certainly there's people who've lived in the area and worked the area far longer than than me and I cede to all of them, all of you who have the knowledge.
Um, I think if there's been any cumulative impact studies done, because there is Suncor, the waste management site is going to be up in that space too. So anything having to do with environmental studies there?
Uh, none as part of the urban renewal process, as the urban renewal pool is really a finance tool to implement work that the city's already done. But certainly the city can update the twenty thirteen to the twenty twenty one study based on on an, an impact study.
I would just because if it's already a light community, it's a red line community, it's a D I C. Um, my concern is that we can have more conversations about this because where does C D up play a role in this as well? Um, unincorporated spaces, we've already mentioned the county. Um, we went, we just happened to go through it today, the R T D space, there's only one exit for cars and then huge traffic right into where the waste management. That is a very, and it's getting narrow and narrow. How can we include that type of, I guess, awareness to how much traffic that's going to be in this space? Um, I don't think we're discussing that as well, those are the environmental concerns there. And I'll be honest, I can speak about it now, but even when we were dealing right now with the Suncor fence line monitoring, we were on that case of because of so many issues across county, state and local spaces, we still didn't get a full fence line monitoring around Suncor, there's still going to be huge gaps. So I know that even in this space especially, there's going to be gaps. There's still going to be huge gaps. So I know that even in this space especially, there's going to be gaps because of the agencies. That's kind of why we need further study sessions and stuff like this, especially in the environment.
Good.
Yes.
No good.
I tried to keep it fast.
Oh, you're good. Okay, I um just wrap this up. Um, just wanted to say that back in two thousand and eight, that city council voted for this spot. There were other other choices where R T D could go. And the city council back in two thousand and eight voted to have this area as our station area. So it was voted up by the council. Our our T D didn't. They had to have the authority of the cities because of all the infrastructure and uh land acquisition all the way down to uh to get this property. Um.
What was the thinking?
I don't know. I want the council.
Oh, okay.
I can tell you, it was the only, it was the only location that was undeveloped that would allow a train station. Otherwise Commerce City would have not had a station. So it's only reason.
Because of the way they laid it out.
Yeah, because of where the tracks lay. It's the only developable site for Commerce City to have a station.
Still R T D.
It is. It's only a small portion of Commerce City. And then I would see, you know, I would say if we're going to do any improvements up here. We also had to make sure we do improvements further down Brighton and Cal- and Colorado that 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 little triangle comes down towards towards um Sun Core area because those roads are so tore up. So we're gonna make this a destination. We gotta we gotta clean this big area up. And I think actually going further south, that should be another U R A. Because we're gonna have to have environmental cleanup twenty fifty years from now. Once some cars not here, then we need to make sure that that's urban renewal as well to find money to to do those cleanups. Um, so to so and then also on seventy fourth. Going west. There's no connection to seventy six going north. That needs to that needs to be thought about too as well. Because if we're going to improve this, we need to make sure people have access because that's why uh eighty eighth is so loaded up because you have uh uh what is it? Rosemary, people trying to get out that way, right? So they had another avenue to go up to seventy six to go north, you'd have staging to the more to the south instead of more up to the middle to clog that up.
Okay.
Um, let's see, and I'll just finish here. And Alseb, is Alseb, is that city owned property or is that sits the uh the school district?
Absorbing, absorbing notes, but it is in the city.
All right. So we did have a conversation with them because we don't want to force anything onto them that they don't want. And then when it comes to school district, you don't go on those meetings and everything. They're actually having less families registered for school. So that's why they're going to combine the middle schools, you know, non to schools in the future is because of so if we turn around and put residential this area back, that means it's it's going to hit abs fourteen and they're they're going to rethink about the schools. Because right now, if they put schools on a ballot, it's not going to pass. And these best grants, they're lucky if they were able to get another one. So that's another thing we had to consider. Twenty six hundred homes in an area with school districts going the opposite way, it's going to impact them uh uh prevent. So I don't know if we can, you know, what I thought is give this back to the the staff and maybe we have to come back to those another meeting with the council and then have the joint meeting with with the county because that way we're not going there and then we're having this long conversation of what we don't agree on.
So if if I could propose this, let us come back to you Q two. While but will we have a conversation about prioritizing items for Q two stay sessions here uh at the end of this month, beginning of beginning of March? So that we can plan April, May, June out. Um, that way we can talk about when we come back around the table with this item for you all during that period, but also can give us a a target month for when to sit down with the county commissioners. Whether that's May or June timeframe for us to be working with our counterparts over there to get that set up. Sound like a plan?
Yes. And then next, I know we don't have much time, so I just want to hear council members, if you want to extend us for another half hour. If not, we're going to be during the ten thirty five.
C three is positive.
No, it's not a simple conversation.
Is there just a direction needed on a C three?
Yeah.
I think it's a, I think the directions is easy. We just need quite frankly, we just need your support to keep moving in that positive direction.
I saw it.
I support.
I support, yeah, I already saw.
So you all took a look at the PowerPoint and your generally.
Well, I I have a couple like just minor fits or minor tweaks, but like.
Direction.
So the thing about um providing tuition.
Yes.
Uh, the thing about providing tuition, you may want to add fees uh because tuition and fees.
Yeah.
Because right now a lot of colleagues on here are offering free tuition, right? So seventy thousand or less or sixty five or less for, and so if you don't add fees, their tuition will be paid for. You won't be able to use the funding anywhere else technically, right?
That's a good point.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to uh address how the money is going to be used to help uh businesses and people trying to launch businesses and ask that there be a process for reviewing the applications for funds in order to ensure that they have the best chance for success. Um, that we're not just giving money to um anyone, if you will, with a with a business idea. I'd love to see it actually used as an incubation. And then you would be able, they would be able then to um infuse our economic development with their businesses. And maybe not limited to um, you know, really low income, but broaden it just a little bit. Just make sure that people are coming with a business plan, that they're being evaluated on that basis and that they're going to be successful. So that's how to generate wealth. And to be able to keep them um, you know, out at move them out of poverty, but that's everybody, you know, of like a broad swath of Commerce City, whether they live south or north, um depending on what they're bringing to us. Because it's about sustainability. That was the ARPA funds can be used for sustainability and that would certainly um support that goal.
Okay.
Just piggyback on that is um, it's been a lot of fraud with the business ARPA funds. So I just want to make sure that we're having some kind of audit, I mean, back to make sure that the funds were used appropriately.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that reminds me of another one.
I guess I reduce the same thing. So adding twenty seven J students, it says Adams fourteen in here, but it doesn't specifically talk about twenty seven J students and you can have language like with the Commerce City address for the for the high school or whatnot, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Um, and that reminds me about rent support. I am concerned about how quickly the money was expended without us having a financial report on it. I would like to see an audit of how that million dollars went out the door for rent support um in a very short space of time. I believe who who was authorized to distribute that money?
That was the housing authority operating on behalf of the uh on behalf of the city.
Okay, then I'd like the housing authority to provide us with a a full accounting of how that money got spent before we spend more on rental assistance. If they're going to be doing it, then they need to demonstrate that they used it. That there's accountability in how they used it.
Um, we can have to do that part, but just to clear it up, um, based on the additions that we would do with community well being. Uh, we would take over the responsibility of distributing those dollars as opposed to working through the housing story.
Okay, but meantime, I'd like to know how they did that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good. Seeing no one else. And so we can move on and.
I need to see Rex's last few.
So as I take it, as I take away, I'm going to continue to keep uh releasing Jim to continue to keep building the pieces. Ultimately, you'll see some ordinances come before you with uh additional details in regards to the matter, but I think that would be the next the next step would be to bring these for Q on some form of programmatic efforts and appropriations. Uh, since we do have to start getting that at least appropriated, spent down by twenty twenty six, but uh I got enough direction from you all based on this conversation. Thank you.
Our notice.
Yeah, actually, um, I just want to thank Mr. Talbert for going beyond. Um. You really did your homework and you did it. You did it well. And um I just want you to know much you're appreciated for doing that. So thank you.
Thank you. We had a good team of people, a lot of people in this room, a lot of people that are not that work on this, so. Well, everybody. I appreciate that. It saddles me as well. And I want to say that uh you did listen and and that's why it's so meaty in this. So I appreciate that.
Pleasure. Got a great team.
Oh, just.
And 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 Mr. Rogers. Just just want to comment to it. Will there be a press release or some type of communication that's sent out as you start sending this out?
At at the appropriate time, yeah, you know, we want to have a robust communication. We want to give the details. We want to give the fact. We want people to be excited.
Yeah.
So I think as we get closer beyond this stage with what that looks like, we can be able to be um highly communicative about it. So definitely.
Thank you. All right, last last one, review work schedule.
All right, I'm gonna go through, well, review work schedule, but a couple of updates. East staff, the assist, all the works installed two air quality monitor sensors at Bison Raven Eagle Point Rec Center. Uh, the sensors were funded through a grant that um her uh conversation department of Adams County to apply for a grant to cover the cost of the sensors. The data will be displayed through the love my air Colorado local S D air network clean. Program provides both costs of air sensors, program data dashboard and programming support. Monitor record two point P M, two point five, P M ten and Knox. We're also going to be working on having this information up in real time on our televisions in both the rec centers so that people are able to make at least understand what is going on and the conditions around them. Uh, we talked about it a little bit earlier today. We've got the economic development and uh community listening session, our second one this Thursday from noon to one. Um, uh, I sent out an email to you all last week about the finalizing the construction drawings for the hundred and twenty of Whiting. Uh, construction should last between ten and twelve months. Once going out to bid this winter, spring with construction to begin in the summer. Uh, with P D, um, we are recently just took steps, as you are aware as well uh to becoming a newest participant and partnering with the handle of care program, which is designed to ensure that children who experience traumatic uh events receive the support and sensitivity that such events demand when they return to school. And as we were on January twenty sixth, January thirtieth, means how about school districts and features around the education commission. We received general support to move that effort forward. Uh, the school district identified both board members and executive leadership to participate in developing guiding principles or charter that can be executed by each respective entity. Uh, this next steps, as I see it, would be to get council support to continue moving forward with bringing the identified people around the table to develop those guiding principles and or what additional documentation that the full council would need to support in the adoption of that of that committee. Keep general head nods to keep that moving forward. Um, what I plan on doing for gold meetings going forward, I'm going to spend time going over the next two agendas of what we have planned. So February twenty sixth, right now we're slated end at nine forty five P M. Uh, we have uh currently slated urban renewal one oh one and discussion around C D O requesting land from uh the U R A for the construction of the sixty second and Vasquez Full Movement Intersection. Uh, and then on the state session, we have a fifteen minute presentation from Victory Prep's STEM Robotics Competitive Team. Uh, we have an hour and fifteen discussion around special district financing options and metro district questions follow up. And then we have a forty five minute conversation around urban camping vans. On the uh fourth of uh Monday, excuse me, Monday, March fourth, uh, we're slated end at nine fifty five P M. Uh, we have the three, I would call big items, just from a timing standpoint, we've got, excuse me, four forty minutes, thirty minutes for oil and gas monthly update. We have two public hearings, one for a rezone from ag to uh light industrial to medium industrial density and a C U P for the PFOA P VAS uh facility for the water district. Uh, and then the other large uh ticket item from a time perspective is we're proposing some of the agenda modifications, things that will make it more streamlined and efficient for us to move through items that are either public business or legislative business. So that way, um, the things that our community cares about and wants to discuss, we can think about how to shift that around, but I'd like to get your feedback. My team and I have been tossing that around uh internally uh for the last couple of weeks, and I think it's right for us to have on the board so that we can start building on our agendas after that. Uh, we have, uh, like I said, at nine fifty five, one admin council uh business item, which is a uh Commerce City Chamber of Commerce sponsorship request for Derby Days in support of the Kentucky Derby. Uh, last two years, we have supported that by twenty five hundred. That request has been made uh to a council member. We will be sending that out as a general note for you all, but it will be on the fourth for you all to support or not to support.
So with that, is there any other amount besides twenty five hundred?
Uh, historically, it's only that's the only dollar amount that we have supported in the past. Not to say that we couldn't give more or we couldn't give less, but it's just what we've done.
Do they provide uh sponsorship levels?
Uh, they did not. I think they just provided what they were requesting from past years, but we can ask.
Sponsorship lovers would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And last general note, I will be out of the office this Friday and then next Thursday and Friday. And in my absence, Ms. Kathy Blatman will be the acting city manager.
Enter city attorney guy, your last one.
Ten twenty nine. Um, yeah, just kind of let you all know that Ashley Larker, our police legal advisor, attended her resignation, she'll be leaving the city. Unfortunately, February twenty third, so we'll be posting for that position um shortly and working with H R and.
What's the title again? I'm sorry.
Sorry?
What's the title again?
The police legal advisor.
Okay, sorry.
Um, otherwise, thank you all. It's kind of hearty.
Thank you, Senator. I think you just speak last time, and I just want to thank you so much for the role that you played the last few months. You did a fabulous job, and I also would like to point out, I wish there was a more staff members here that um Matt Hader also did a fabulous job for nineteen months, I think it was, and there was no break, we, you know. The stuff, the city didn't suffer during all of this time legally, as far as we know. Because you guys just picked up the ball and ran with it. So uh, thank you to you and to Matt. We're so glad we're going to be seeing you.
You can hang out with us whenever you want.
Yes, I will be around. We all have offices and everything now.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time.